Good evening. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, May 1st at 6:00 PM in council chambers. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Council President Amanda Baum.
Present.
President Proton Taylor.
Here.
Councilmember Banks.
Present.
Councilmember Brightwell.
Here.
Councilmember Cruz.
Present.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Can you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. On our agenda this evening, there is one change. We are moving the Item A under Administration under the Council portion of the agenda. Next, we have appointments. I'll leave turn it over to our Deputy HR Director, Dr. Calhoun.
Good evening. Our first request is Charles Woodward from the Building Department. And on behalf of Administration, I am pleased at this time to recommend the appointment of Charles Woodward to the position of Building Official. Mr. Woodward has been performing the responsibilities of Acting Building Official since November of 2022. He is an experienced manager with an extensive background in all aspects of plumbing, plan review, and building inspection, and holds all the necessary credentials and certifications for the position of Building Official. Funding for this position is available in the approved department budget. And at this time, I'm respectfully requesting that Council approve the attached recommended resolution appointing Mr. Charles Woodward to the position of Building Official.
Council, any questions? Go ahead.
Yes, Councilmember.
I'd just like to move the appointment of Charles Woodward to Building Official in the management group.
Support. It has been moved by Councilman Banks, supported by -- I'm sorry. It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the appointment of Charles Woodward as the Building Official in the management group as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And I'd like to do the next appointment, the next appointment as well.
Can we say something?
Well, for Mr. Woodward, there's, we have to appoint him as a city constable in order for him to effectively do his job. Any questions on making Mr. Woodward a city constable? Okay?
Mr. President, I'd like to move that we approve the appointment of Charles Woodward as a city constable.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to appoint Charles Woodward as a city constable.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you all very much and everybody back there. I just wanted to let you know that I appreciate the confidence that you've shown in me. And I can only make two promises. One is that I'm going to continue to provide for the health, safety, and welfare of everybody who lives and works here in this fine city. The second is, is I'm going to work very hard every single day to make sure that the confidence you're showing today is unwavering and that you'll never be disappointed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Woodward, come back up. We're not, we're not done with you yet.
I had all that down. Curbs in there.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I would just like to say welcome and congratulations. I'm excited that you are going to be our Building Official. The few times that we've worked together, you're direct, you're right to the point, and I personally love it. We've agreed to disagree, but you've always won in the end, but.
Thank you.
But, you know, so welcome, and I hope you enjoy your new position as much as I love our great city. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Yes, Mr. Mayor?
I've just been working pretty closely with Mr. Woodward since his arrival last fall. And you may not know this, but he's a history buff. And so he's been reading up on Southfield history. Of course, I provided with lots of material, and I appreciate that, getting to know the community in a deeper sense. So, and I think it's fabulous that you got this cheering section out back there. That doesn't happen every day, so.
They're all good people. I would never have made it this far.
Anyhow, congratulations and look forward to continuing working with you.
Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yes, I too am very, you know, excited about the fact that you have so many fans out here today. So that says something in itself, but also I just want to acknowledge the fact that, you know, every council meeting that I've been here, you've been here. And so that just gives me the feeling that, you know, the city is very important to you. You want to know the issues, you want to know what's going on, and you are the type of person that we want to have in our ranks, you know, as the city moves forward. So congratulations to you, and we look forward to working with you further.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. But don't go too far. Can we have one more appointment?
Yes. At this time, I would like to start by congratulating Mr. Jeffrey Spence, Assistant City Planner, on his retirement after more than 30 years of service. Spence's departure creates a vacancy in a critical function. I would like to present to you Thomas Payson for your confirmation to the position of Deputy City Planner for the city of Southfield. Mr. Payson comes to the city with experience as a manager and zoning administrator. He holds a master's degree in landscape architect from the University of Michigan, a master's degree in biology from University of Tennessee, a bachelor's degree in biological science from Michigan Technical University, as well as two other associate degrees. Additionally, he holds all the recommended credentials and certificates for the position of Deputy City Planner to include the American Institute of Certified Professionals, AICP. Funding for this position is available in the approved departmental budget. I am respectfully requesting on behalf of the Planning Department and Administration to appoint Mr. Payson to the position of Deputy Center, Deputy City Planner, excuse me, in the management group pay rate, pay grade 406.
Council, any questions? Councilman Hoag?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the appointment of City Deputy Planner, Mr. Thomas Payson.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to appoint Mr. Thomas Payson as Deputy City Planner, as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Did you want to, did you want to say anything, sir? Mr. Payson, did you want to say anything?
I really appreciate the opportunity to serve the community of Southfield. I've really been looking forward to kind of moving up and taking on more responsibility in the planning profession, and there are a lot of exciting things happening here that I'm really looking forward to getting into. I've already started working on reading up on all your documentation and getting familiar with the community to the extent, but I look forward to learning a lot more about Southfield and getting really down into the work. That's about all I have to say about that.
All right. Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I spoke to Mr. Payson earlier, and I got here early. I spent about 20 minutes talking to him, and we had a very long, broad-ranging discussion to the extent that I believe this gentleman is definitely job-ready, and I think he comes with a wealth of knowledge, and I'm glad that Terry has added him to his team. And he gave me some background info. A lot of you might not know, but, you know, Ford Motor Company moved me and my ex-wife here years ago, and just so happened we moved in Dearborn. Ford arranged for me to get some housing there. And for two years, we got to know Dearborn, and Mr. Payson, he gave me some background info that was relative to Dearborn and what Ford Motor Company obviously meant to Dearborn. But that history, I was glad to hear that, but also I mentioned to Mr. Payson that we are currently in the market to do something with a swimming pool and a recreational center. And I mentioned to him that Dearborn is one of the cities that we visited. We spent a lot of time at the Dearborn Rec Center. And clearly, once we move forward in our planning and doing what we're going to do with the Rec Center, I think Mr. Payson turned out to be, just briefly, a good, a wealth of information with respect to how Dearborn, what they did with their Rec Center and their pool. So that's just my endorsement of him during the little 20 or 30 minutes that we talked. I found him to be a very knowledgeable and a capable individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Again, also, I'd like to say welcome to the city of Southfield and hopefully in your new position as Deputy City Planner, that you love it as much as I love this beautiful city. It's a great place to work, and welcome.
Thank you.
We will now have our city clerks, where are you in? As well as Mr. Woodward?
You can talk for a minute?
Yeah, we can.
I would like to address, I am entitled to a term, and I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the city of Southfield, and I will faithfully perform the duties of the office of Building Official and Deputy Constable and Deputy City Planner, and in accordance with Southfield Council, also the State of Michigan, according to the test of my word.
I do.
Congratulations.
And gentlemen, we'd like to. Crowde.
Yes, I'd like to welcome Thomas to the team and that on May 22nd, we hope to recognize Mr. Spence for his nearly 32 years. So we'll have a much more formal thank you for Mr. Spence, and Mr. Payson was the strongest of many great candidates that we interviewed for the position. But the fact that he can step right in and take over as best he can Mr. Spence's position with his skill set was a big reason, and his ability to come and spend at least a week with Mr. Spence to get some of that institutional knowledge was another reason. So thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Next, we have Communications. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. No speaker may make personal or imprudent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which the officer, employee, or city council member, or other elected official performs his or her duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presented officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presented officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the meeting, of the public meeting of the city council, and may be ordered by the presented officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presented officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. I'd like to call on Pamela Gerald. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Council, and congratulations to the vote for the two appointed new city executives, to our city administrator, Mr. Fred Zorn, and to our esteemed attorney. Good evening. Well, I'd like to give a shout-out to State Representative Tyrone Carter for HB 4202, and also his colleague HB 4204. People know for about 27 years, I have talked about school bus safety and when drivers need to stop. And those bills, the stop cameras, are suggested to be put on the school buses so that they can get the license plates to the cars that are not stopping. I think that most residents understand what the different colors for the lights mean. So for those that don't know, when the lights are flashing yellow, it means to slow down, proceed with caution, and be prepared to stop. But when those pedals are out extended and you see a stop sign and those lights are flashing red, that means to stop. Do not try to drive around the bus. That means if you're coming in the opposite direction and there's no barrier, wall, or median, you have to stop also. We talk about all these things that we do for our kids. We teach them how to test, and we prepare them for success, and we show them how to dress. We even want to stop some of the fighting and all the stuff in school, but what people don't pay enough attention to, in my mind, is the fact that before they can do all of that, they have to make it to school safe. So just think, if it was your child, or your grandchild, or your great-grandchild, would you stop for the school bus? And would you do that for our kids? So I just wanted to give a shout-out to those two state reps. I have made contact with State Rep. Tyrone Carter to ask him to go a little bit further with this initiative and make it mandatory for all school buses to have the cameras. And certainly, since the residents passed that $345 million bond proposal for the schools for 30 years at 5% interest, we got a lot of money to put cameras on those school buses and any new buses that we buy, make it a part of the bus, and put those cameras on the bus. So residents, please stop, observe the school bus, respect our children so that they will in turn respect us. Thank you.
Can I just speak with you real quick?
Yes.
Yeah. Ms. Gerald, I'm sorry, could you give us the other representative's name?
It's a name I can't pronounce, Greg Van Worn, something like that. Just look up HB 4204.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You can Google it right now. It'll come up.
Thank you. I'm in a meeting right now.
Thank you. Next, we have two sets of minutes.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I'd like to move approval of the joint meeting minutes of April 17th, 2023, as well as the regular meeting minutes of April 17th, 2023.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilman Hoag, to approve the joint meeting minutes of April 17th, 2023, and the regular meeting minutes of April 17th, 2023. Mr. Frazier has a question.
Yeah, I have a question about the joint meeting with the Planning Commission.
Yes.
And in that, in those minutes, it said, and I'm trying to remember the quote accurately, that the Planning Commission, the Planning Commission is going to help the city council with guidance or something, something similar to that. And I think they got it backwards. I raised a question in that meeting that the Planning Commission, and it came up when they asked to be the final decision deciders on the site plan. And I said, I would agree with that as long as the two of us, the two groups, were compatible with where we're going, because we're the final decider. And they recommend to us, but they don't make a final decision. So I just want to make that clear when we vote for it, that they are recommending, a recommending body, and we need to sit down if there's any confusion about what I was saying. I'd be more than happy to talk with anyone to make sure that we're together so that our vision of curb appeal, our vision of what Southfield is going to be down the road is the same.
So the sentence that you're looking at says, "After an introduction, the council and planning commission discussed final approval for site plans without special use." It was left generic. And I believe that's the sentence you're referencing. There's also, there's also one item, "How do planning commission recommendations guide city council decisions?"
Recommend and guide.
Was there, did you want something clarified?
Well, I, she just showed me the actual writing. It's, "The planning commission wants to do the final decision on the site plan, and it recommend and guide the council." I'm not sure, but I don't think that that's their purview.
Right, and we, I believe at the meeting, it was discussed that the council would sit down with the planning commission again to discuss what, what kind of guidelines or what type of.
Yeah, we need to get that clarified.
Correct, that we would have before we even went to having them as.
Right.
The final approval.
Yeah, I wouldn't want them to think that at their next meeting that we felt that they could make the final decision on the site plan.
Correct. I believe that we, our ordinance does not allow it either, and I believe that our planner won't allow them to do that. So we should be good until, until such time where the council actually votes on a revised ordinance that would allow them to make the final decision.
Okay.
Is that correct, Mr. Crowde?
Yes, it would take ordinance revision in order to enact that.
Did you have anything further?
No, just as long as we're together.
Okay. So we have a motion. Any other questions? We have a motion by Councilman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, for the two meeting minutes as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have one public hearing, and this is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant for the 2023-24 Annual Action Plan and the 21 through 26 Five-Year Consolidated Plan.
Good evening, Council. I'm presenting the proposed budget for the HUD Community Development Block Grant Program. I have a visual, it's also in your packet, just with a little of our budgeting history. We've been receiving this entitlement since 1975. For next fiscal year, Southfield will receive entitlement of $387,080. It's a decrease of $2,700 from last year, but we are still proposing to continue to fund our same nine activities. Our housing activities make up the majority of our budget, and that includes three programs: chore, ship, and our sub-recipient rebuilding together. Our chore program, it assists with repairs and maintenance for seniors and physically-challenged homeowners. And this year, we are serving 135 client homes, which serves over 160 people, and we're always getting new applications in and sending them out to more residents. We're going to, we're hoping to increase those chore funds. We've been using our $500 allotments since 2012, so we'd like to increase with the extra funds, increase it to 600. Obviously, repair, the cost of repairs have increased, but also we do help with home emergencies such as someone needs a new furnace, hot water heater, electrical emergencies. There was a lot of cleanup that had to be done this year because of storms, and we'd like to add some junk removal services to help our seniors. Our ship program is the Southfield Home Improvement Program, the no-interest loan, and we also have our sub-recipient rebuilding together. We are funding them a little more money. They started to really ramp up with their work and their volunteers. They have a project going on next month. Public services, that's our emergency relief fund. Lighthouse, which was South Oakland County Shelter. Haven and Southfield Youth Assistance. With our emergency relief funding, we found more of a need for food, and with some extra funding, we'll be able to provide that. And I'd like to, I'm happy to say that with Southfield Youth Assistance, in addition to kind of gearing up for their summer camp scholarships, they, they did give out eight scholarships for a trip to Chicago for some fifth graders, and this was their first trip since the pandemic that they were able to plan. There's our administration budget, which does include fair housing activities. So with that, hopefully, after a public hearing is closed, you will approve our 2023-24 Annual Action Plan and again confirm the five-year plan without changes, and that was approved by you guys originally, April 26th, 2021.
All right. Thank you. We will now have a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant 2023-2024 Annual Action Plan. Please give your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Thank you, Council President Amanda Baum. Pamela Gerald, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Still have the same number. I know with everything that's happening in the economy that it seems like the amount of money that the government is giving out each and every year is being reduced. So I have a couple of questions about what's being proposed up there. And for most of you that have been around the city as long as I have, and I've been around the city now for 40 years, I can't believe that much time has gone by, I have been fighting for Haven for probably about 27 to 30 years. I lost track, but I know it's been a while. So Haven is getting $3,000, and we keep talking about domestic violence being high and on the rise. We see it in the news, we can tell from the police responses, we've got violence in the schools, and we're just surrounded by violence, not necessarily here in the city of Southfield, but just in our United States. And I've been doing some checking, and I think that we might be the only municipality that's giving less than $11,000 to Haven. So the question that I have to try to find eight more thousand dollars to give them $11,000, how many people are getting paid under the program administration? The $77,700. The seventy-seven thousand, seven hundred, it looks like sixty-nine or eighty-nine dollars. I don't have my glasses on. And then, is it possible that you can take two thousand from SHIP revolving loan funds? And then two thousand from SHIP? The one at the top, that's a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, and then take four thousand from Shore, from Chore, to make up eleven thousand for Haven? If we keep saying that domestic violence is high and on the rise, we have to reflect that in our generosity to give a little bit more to Haven. Because you know, they do some wonderful things in the state of Michigan. And they are the largest domestic violence and sexual assault shelter in the state of Michigan. So, think about that. But I do want my question answered about the program administration budget.
Alright, this is a public hearing for the Community Development Block Grant, two thousand twenty-three, twenty-four annual action plan. Alright, seeing no one else, the public hearing is now closed. Ms. Greenstein, could you come up? Would you like to address that question?
Administration question. There are three people that get paid.
Okay, thank you.
And, um, we did increase Haven. We do have like a public service cap that we work with. So the funds that are, the funding pot also goes to, uh, Lighthouse, the shelter, as well as our emergency relief funding, which, again, we've actually been giving food boxes directly to citizens. And I have seen that we have accomplished quite a bit with the three thousand dollars. A lot of legal assistance for a lot of residents and also sheltering.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Hoag?
Yes, um, I would agree with Mrs. Gerald that Haven should be increased. But you just said it was increased, but looking at it, it wasn't.
A couple of years ago. It was at this age, fifteen hundred as the
Mr. President, I'd like to, uh, just comment. One, we have the fifteen percent public service. So within the categories you're looking at, the emergency relief fund, Southfield Youth Assistance, Haven and Lighthouse. Of the total allocation, only fifteen percent can be used. So if there's any movement of money, it needs to be within that fifty-six thousand, sixty-two dollars. And I will tell you, over the years, I can't speak to what the other communities are, are doing. But if you look at over the years, HUD's programs are, are primarily focused on housing. There are other programs that focus on domestic violence. Within HUD's programs, there are other set-asides, the home, the, help me out, the WOPA. A couple of other programs that target money that don't come to Southfield, but come to, basically through Oakland County, through the population. Then I wanted to speak on the admin. You know, frankly, we run this program, uh, primarily with non-career employees. And that was not the case four or five years ago. There was a period when the general fund was subsidizing this program to keep it work. And so far, we've been able to keep it working with it. But when I see the admin fees being cut to the, the level twenty percent, below eighty thousand, it gets tougher and tougher to make this program work. It is a very bureaucratic program, has a lot of compliance requirements, and, you know, that we have to stay, stay, stay on top of. I'll, I'll say it frankly, we're in much better shape today than we were when we had full-time staff. We've been able to make it work, but as city administrator, I am concerned about that. If we were to go out and hire a full-time person, we'd be in the six figures, uh, with friend benefit and back to subsidizing it. I'm just telling you the, the way it is. You know, Haven does wonderful things. If there's anything that happens, it has to come, stay within that, uh, the, uh, the fifty the, the thirty-six thou, what is it? Fifty, fifty-six thousand is fifteen percent.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
We had this discussion, I think, every year. And I don't think there's a question about the value of Haven, of Haven and our whole push with, uh, under Chief Barron, um, and the Forty-Sixth District Court to address domestic violence. I know what I did last year, and I would encourage other people to do this. I wrote a personal check. It's tax deductible. And that's how I, um, we got, you know, more money came from Southfield. So, uh, I'm not saying you should do that. I just, I hear the discussion. I know the parameters. And every year, remember, this fund used to be a million dollars. And, and it's shrinking, shrinking, shrinking. And yet, we have many seniors that need Chore. We have many people that need the SHIP program, uh, the Youth for Youth Assistance. These are all good things. There's just not the kind of money that we used to have. So I, I would encourage anybody in the audience, uh, as well as council, write a check, uh, to Haven. I will write another one this year myself.
Good, thank you. Councilman Hoag, did you have any?
Yeah, I wasn't finished. Um, I, I just wanted to, no, that's okay, to just again put it. I think both Haven as well as Lighthouse of Michigan, I understand if we, we've raised it years past, that's years past. But if we could try to focus a little something, you know, I'm gonna support this. But, you know, next year or the next budget, it would be helpful to give a little something, you know, to try to give a little bit more, because the need is getting more and more. That's all.
Alright, thank you. Councilman Banks?
Um, yes, um, could you please explain again, what is the emergency relief fund? And the dollars that are allocated for that?
Sure. Uh, the emergency relief fund, I mean, um, it helps prevent evictions by helping people with payment for rent or mortgage. It also helps with utility shut-offs by providing people with payments for utility bills. It gives people assistance with medical, um, you know, with medicines or a medical device if they need urgently. Food, we've given people, you know, food. It's actually really Rhonda Terry, she administers it. We've worked even, you know, with a food bank to be able to get out more food when there's been more needs. And people, you know, really come to her that really need that direct help. And she gets, you know, their rent paid or their, you know, utility bill paid so their heat doesn't get turned off. So it's really directly benefiting, you know, a lot of people. Like I said, I would say the same with Southfield Youth Assistance. They're giving scholarships to kids that couldn't go to camp or do these after-school programs. And, um,
So we could take
I mean, I see them working all the time.
We could take somebody from the emergency relief fund if we wanted to and move it?
It is part of the public service group, as opposed to the housing.
As long as you're within the fifteen, uh, percent. I, I will say this, the emergency relief fund and Rebuild Together are the programs that leverage the most outside dollars. And if Rick or Nina wanna add any more to it, for example, I think Rhonda Terry's, I saw her, Denise is here. For every dollar we put in, other agencies are putting more money in. When someone's going through an eviction or needs something, uh, we're, you know, I will tell you, Rhonda Terry's on the phone leveraging money from the WARM program and our dollars and cobbling dollars to solve someone's problems. So those are dollars that are leveraged very well. I, I will say this, I'm sure Lighthouse and Haven do the same thing. I'm just not familiar enough with how they leverage the dollars. I think the last time we saw some numbers on Rebuild Together, for every dollar we put in, we get another seven dollars. But within, you, you could move money within the, uh, public service. We'll tell you the Southfield Youth Assistance, uh, we probably need to go back and do a review of how that came about. It is an obligation of the city, uh, through the system. And this is how we, we cover our share of that.
Okay, because I, I noticed that we incre, whoops, we increased that amount. So I was just wondering if we could take a few thousand and just move it? Because I also agree with the Haven program, and especially with everything that's going on in the world right now. You know, I don't know if there's a representative here from Haven, but, um, they do a lot of good things for people. And I believe that we also utilize their services here in the city of Southfield.
For every one of these public service groups, we enter into a service contract with them for these dollars.
I mean, I don't even know if we could even, you know, because at one time, wasn't Haven up to almost like twelve or fifteen thousand dollars? Way back when, when we had the money, I mean?
Not during my tenure here. I mean, Rick, I, so
I think it was, was it ten thousand?
I think so.
Yes, ten, yeah, something like that. So we've gone, we went from like ten thousand down to what, fifteen hundred? And now we're, last few years has been up to three thousand. I mean, I don't know if council's interested in moving.
Also, when you look at the last, the amount of money that we've gotten in the last few years, it's, uh, it's gone down. I looked, I think nineteen ninety-five was the year we got the most money. That was six hundred and sixty thousand.
Correct.
And the last couple of years, we're just under four hundred thousand. So it's, uh,
And I'll state this, on the emergency relief fund, the last few years, we've had COVID money. And that gave us a much larger amount of money. And I know we ran more money through that program because we had COVID dollars that were specifically meant for emergency-type relief. And I know, uh, you know, we could pull up the report, but, uh, that was, that hundred and thirty-seven thousand, those were the recovery dollars.
Do you have any other questions?
No, I was just, I don't know if council's interested. I mean, if council's not interested, that's one thing. I'd, I'd like to see a little bit more money go to Haven also, but.
I'm in agreement with that. And when we, when this was first presented, I did mention that. And I believe, uh, I was told the fifteen percent based on public service. But we could move the monies within that particular category to give Haven more, because it is a, a need there.
And I'm just gonna point out, two years ago, we were putting money into the TOS program. We've completely eliminated any assistance to the TOS program. And that was thirty-some thousand, Rick?
And I, and I agree that's what we've done, but tonight, given what we have, can we move? I guess it's up to us, council. Would we be willing to suggest that they move, you know, fifteen hundred dollars from human services to Haven? I mean, do we wanna?
I would be in support of that.
Okay, but then
Well, we have a few more questions before we let's get the questions out of the way, and then we can discuss if we want to move some money around.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah. This has been a, a constant thing about every year, every year, somebody comes up and wants to move money from here to there, and, you know, and we did, used to give, uh, Haven ten thousand dollars, uh, each year. Then when the money started going down, we had to make some decisions, and this is quite a number of years ago, that the money that we give to each one of the organizations really is a portion of the, the money that they use to help the citizens of Southfield. And that was how we agreed with the amount of money that we did with Haven. And if you look at the, the numbers on this, this chart, if that was all the money that each one of the organizations got, I could understand that. But if you look at the total budget of Haven, where all the money comes from, the money that we, uh, put in Haven is to help with, uh, citizens of Southfield, as well as some of the other ones. But, um, if we take some of the, the other ones and some suggestions where, let's move money from one organization to another, stay within the fifteen percent, we don't know what the total funding is for the other, the other organizations that we're taking money from. That may be the only money they get, or the majority of the money. So it would hurt that organization a lot worse than, uh, than giving, uh, by giving five thousand dollars or more to, to Haven, when they really have a lot, a much larger budget to, to deal with the issues that they deal with. So I'm okay with where we're at, because we don't know what the, the, uh, total budget is of Haven unless, and it should be a, something that whoever's working on it, on this, uh, budget should, uh, should understand. So, but it's designed to help the people in Southfield. And there are a number of other people in Southfield and other groups in Southfield that, when their kids are out of school in the summertime, they don't have enough money for lunch. So I know our church took on a project, uh, for about five years, where we were donating to, uh, Lighthouse of, of Oakland County, and donating peanut butter and jelly for the kids, so they would at least have peanut butter and jelly sandwiches at lunchtime. Because when they're in school, they get lunch at school, but during the summertime, they didn't have. So we have to take all of this into consideration. So I wouldn't be, uh, favorable of moving more money from another group to reduce the, their budget and give it to Haven, until we knew what Haven's budget is. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Frazier, uh, went down the same train of thought that I'm, that I'm getting ready to expose. Budgets are normally, you know, developed and or based on need. And based on the ability to meet that need. Since I've been on council, every year, Haven, Lighthouse, and numerous other, it is always a, a conversation. And as an individual, I know there's a need, and that need really popped up during COVID. And looking at our morning police report, I saw consistently the number of domestic violence cases. And I think it, it got so bad, the police chief started tracking, uh, domestic violence cases to report out, uh, what they were doing. So the, the point being is, is that this is a small amount of money. And I'm, I would like to see what is Haven's major source of income. And our, our fifteen hundred, uh, does that contribute anything to allow them to better perform their, their duties or their service that they are providing? As opposed to taking it away from another, another, um, grantee? And does us taking something away from them, does that severely hurt their mission? Because fifteen hundred dollars to Haven, uh, really, I don't think that really, well, we're having it three thousand, the Lighthouse has fifteen hundred. I'm not sure how, how much that provide for their efficiency performing the, the service that they provide. But if we take that money from another entity, how are we hurting that entity more than the representative dollars that are going there? So it, there's someone, let's say, who, who's really knowledgeable of these things. They allow, they allocate X amount of dollars here, fifteen percent for a reason. And, uh, it's, you know, moving dollars around, you know, what are we doing for them? And what are we, how are we hurting somebody else? And I'm afraid that we'll And I'm afraid that we'll probably, magnitude of hurt is being magnified somewhere else. Whereas the magnitude of benefit for this is not being, is not really changing that much. We know it's a problem. And all these individuals, all these entities that we're looking at, they have problems. They wouldn't exist if the problem did not exist in our society. So I'm, I'm kind of adverse to moving dollars around. If I had more input, we're just moving dollars just to be new and moving dollars. We might be hurting severely another entity that really needs the money more than the fact that we are taking something away from somebody else.
Councilwoman Hoag?
Both the arguments from Councilman Frazier and Councilman Brightwell are valid. But I'm seeing that the total public service amount is not at the maximum fifteen percent of the overall grand. So maybe we take just a tad bit from the program administration if we can. That, that's not the full fifteen percent. And I'm thinking like, you know, just maybe give Haven five thousand. Any little bit helps. I mean, I wouldn't say, I would, someone in need to tell someone in need that a little bit isn't going to help. See what they say. So I, I think maybe we, we take the maximum fifteen percent because it's not there right now. And if we can from program administration. It's just a thought. I mean, I, to see it still at three thousand, even the fifteen hundred for Lighthouse of Michigan, they do great works. If we could pull twenty-five hundred, give two to Haven and five hundred to Lighthouse to take them to five hundred and two thousand respectively, that would be great. But if we're not amenable to that, so be it.
Right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I can just tell you that the emergency fund that Rhonda Terry, our Human Services Director, administers, this is not a lot of money for the number of calls that come here with people really feeling desperate, afraid of eviction, can't pay a heat bill, need food. She does a tremendous job with the money that she has. But we consider ourselves a pretty affluent community. But we do have people here with great need. And I just would not, and it's your decision, but I would not cut, cut the funds from the emergency fund.
Counsel, any other questions or discussion? Do you want to do anything different?
Well, I, I think that Councilwoman Hoag brought up a good point that we are two thousand dollars difference in the budget. I don't know where the additional two thousand dollars is. I don't know if it's under the project activity or if it's under administration or wherever. But if we can give up to fifteen percent, the additional two thousand dollars, could we move it from wherever and put it with Haven since we all know that that is a need that we in Southfield utilize? It's not like we're taking it and doing something that doesn't make sense. We actually use their services. Our residents use Haven on a regular basis and have increased since COVID. So if we could do that, just to, every little bit helps. And I totally agree with Councilwoman Hoag. If you're, if you're the one in need and someone is standing there telling you, well, it's just a little bit, so it's not going to make a difference. When you're in need, everything helps. Everything helps. So my suggestion or my request would be for us to bring that up to the full fifteen percent. Wherever you take the additional two thousand dollars from.
So suggestion that I have, if we have, and the math is correct, we have two thousand dollars that we're short that we can use within public service. What if we took that from housing under CHOR and had CHOR at one sixty-five and then added two thousand to Haven? Would that, would that work?
Mr. President, I'd like to just recommend you take it from the SHIP program, the sixty-one thousand. Decrease that by the two thousand. Take your fifty-six sixty-two up to the full fifty-eight. We do know on the SHIP program, we have been awarded a congressional earmark from our former Congresswoman Lawrence's request. And we're in the process of processing three-quarter of a million. When that proposal was written, we had our administrative function being carried out by Habitat. I will tell you, we could be spending a million dollars a year in that program. Roof sat twenty, twenty-four thousand, furnaces running twelve, fifteen thousand. The money just doesn't go that, that far. And we have a waiting list of people who are asking for assistance. And this is about the preservation of our housing stock. And this, if there's one year, you can take money from that program because you have that three-quarter of a million coming in. A piece of that will be going towards administration with Habitat. But that'll, that's probably going to put the city in the strongest position for administering that program. It speaks to, we need administrative personnel to carry out and administer these programs. So I don't want to see anything happen with the administration. Fair Housing by statute is charged to administration.
So then we would take the SHIP.
From the sixty-one six oh two.
Entitlement to sixty-one six oh two, make it fifty-nine six oh two.
Yep.
And then make Haven five thousand.
Yep.
Is council agreeable to that?
Yes, yes, I am.
There's always going to be somebody that's, that's left out.
Correct.
So you can only move around. Pieces around on the board so many times.
I mean, we've gone around about pennies. So, you know, it's, you know, like you said, Myron, excuse me, that, you know, somebody's going to always want some more.
Sure.
You know, in one way, shape, or form. But I do think Haven has a legitimate reason for us to move some money over there if we can.
Right, Councilman Brightwell?
If, if there's a consensus to, to move the money around, that is, that's fine. And, and I guess getting things done is all about consensus. But in the future, whoever's developing this budget, I want to find out the budget of Haven and Lighthouse. How much money are they getting? And who are their major sources of funds? And clearly, it is not the city of Southfield. So I just want to know where they're getting their money from. And, and we talk about need. As a former chair of the Veterans Commission, every year, when we had extra money, I made sure we donated money to the Emergency Relief Fund because we know veterans, they come up, some of them getting their lights cut off, or they need groceries, they need shoes, and those kind of things. So if there's anyone in the audience, you have an organization that has excess funds. Not that we had excess funds, but we had, we had a stream of funds coming in. And it satisfied our, our need as a Veterans Commission. We gave the extra to our Human Services here. But just for consensus purposes, I'm willing to go along with whatever the group will agree with. But in the future, we definitely want, I want to see the budget for Haven. In Michigan, Oakland County, whoever we're giving this to, because these are small dollars. And am I hurting the Emergency Relief Fund that buys a guy a pair of shoes? Or a female, get her a taxi to go to work? Or those kind of things, those emergency relief things? Because there's a give and take. And, and I, and I agree, when you're in need, you don't care where it's coming from. Everybody has a certain need. And it's, if, when it's satisfied, you're happy. When it's not satisfied, you're, you're not completely happy, so. But my only request here tonight is that, I'm going to bring it up next year, is that whenever this comes up again, I want to see the budget for Haven and the budget for Lighthouse. I just want to see who are their major benefactors. Thank you.
Councilman Cruz?
Yeah, I just wanted to know, since you were talking, Councilman Brightwell, does this budget come before Finance Committee at all?
No, no.
Okay. I was just, I was just curious as to, you know, was that part of the discussion? Or is it just that we end up with it here?
It did come to council a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
Before we set the call hearing.
Yeah, I understand that part. But I just wanted, Finance people had to put an eye on it before it even got here. And so apparently not.
Purely in-house.
Okay.
Any other questions, council? Are we prepared to vote?
Yes.
Okay.
What are we going to vote on?
Mr. Chair?
We are, we're making one change, or really, two changes. We're going to move two thousand dollars from SHIP, the Southfield Home Improvement Program entitlement, from sixty-one six oh two to fifty-nine six oh two. And increase that money in Haven from three thousand to five thousand. That's the recommendation. And everything else stays the same.
So moved?
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the CDBG twenty-three twenty-four Annual Action Plan with the changes noted. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have an ordinance. Oh, before that, thank you very much, Rick and Nina. We appreciate your efforts in getting this done. Madam Attorney, question is, the motion did not include the five-year consolidated plan. Do we need a motion for that as well?
Can you repeat what? There was a motion.
The motion was for the annual action plan. It did not include the five-year consolidated plan. Do we need a separate motion for that?
I think to make it clear, Madam Plurk, would you agree that we would need to do that? To make it clear, because we made the motion for the changes, but you're saying we still need to make the motion for the five-year consolidation?
We did, we did not include, the motion did not include the five-year consolidation. Do we need an additional motion for that?
I would say yes, to make the record clear.
Okay. So we'll accept the motion for the five-year consolidated plan.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion, I'm sorry. I'd like to move that we approve the consolidated five-year plan for 2021 through 2026.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the twenty-one through twenty-six five-year consolidated plan. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, we have an ordinance.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we enact ordinance number one seven six nine, which is the Council Initiating Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment.
Support. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Cruz, to enact ordinance number one seven six nine, the Council Initiating Zoning Ordinance Text Amendment. Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next, we have our agenda items for discussion and our action. And first up is the unexpended American Rescue Plan Act funds.
Good evening, council. What I am asking for tonight is a bookkeeping entry, essentially. As you know, the city received approximately nine point eight million under the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. As of our last fiscal year end, June thirtieth of 2022, we had expended just over a million dollars of that. Under the rules promulgated by the Treasury Department, there is an allowance to recognize up to ten million dollars of this funding as revenue replacement. And that's what I'm here asking for tonight, to take the remainder of the amount awarded to the city that has not, had not been expended as of June thirtieth, 22, or approximately eight point eight million, and recognize it as revenue in the current fiscal year.
Counsel, any questions? I, you have a question, sir?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, so I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
So that will show us a larger surplus in our current budget, is that correct?
It will. It will increase the revenues overall in our general fund, which will then go into fund balance for any amounts that aren't expended in the current year. As you know, council's already authorized spending some of that money in the current year, so that will offset it.
Okay, and that was taken into the account, the budget you're preparing?
For twenty-four, yes, sir.
Twenty-four, perfect, okay. Mr. Frazier?
Will, the balance that you don't use for this year, will it go into our surplus?
Yeah, that does stay in the general fund's fund balance.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Counsel, any other questions? All right, Councilman Brightwell?
Mr. Chair, I move that we make the accounting adjustment as presented in the June twenty, June thirtieth, 2022 revenue replacement as provided.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilman Cruz, to accept the unexpended American Rescue Plan Act funds as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have item B, an authorization to proceed with design development and construction documents for the Beechwoods Park.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
Before I start, I'm joined here by a few folks I'd like to recognize. We've got Kathleen McNellis and Shawna Rochelfe here from the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. We also have from OHM, Rhett Gronvel, Chris Riggert. And also here from Turner Construction is Oscar Knowles. Thank you. Tonight, I'll be laying a little bit of groundwork for you with this item. And then Chris Riggert will, will be presenting to you this evening in regards to the Beechwoods Splash Park and amenities. Tonight, I'm seeking your authorization, Parks and Recreation is seeking your authorization, to proceed with design development and construction documents for the Beechwoods project. And I'll try and be quick with this, but I do, I do want to refer back to where we started. So a little over three years ago, Parks and Recreation has been working to transform Beechwoods Park following the closing of the golf course. We engaged with OHM to do a master plan for that park specifically. During that process, we engaged with the residents to find out how they wanted us to develop that park going forward. We brought that plan to you and you approved it in September of 21. We also came to you in 22, November of 22, to ask for your permission to engage with OHM to start a schematic design of that first phase of the project. And that project included a new entrance, a parking lot, two new picnic structures, three new service buildings, a splash pad, some work on the maintenance building, I will say that, some investment on the maintenance building at that time, and some stormwater management for improved site, for the improved site. So in addition, at the same time, Parks and Recreation and OHM advisors work with our purchasing department to identify a qualified construction manager. Now, just a little bit of information, that construction manager is responsible for collaborating with OHM, does design reviews, value engineering, lifecycle costing, constructibility reviews, estimating, scheduling, bids, and so on. The selected firm, Turner Construction, has become an asset to our project team for their pre-construction phase of this project. We also engaged, as you know, we also engaged with Vortex to provide a schematic-level design for the splash pad structure and all those spray features. That schematic design package was received. That schematic design package was received by our city in March thirty-first of this year. And we provided that schematic to Turner Construction. And as a reminder, at the same time, we're working with Oakland County Parks to look at how we want to develop and co-partner with the management of that, of that property there. So, importantly to this project, um, it serves both parties. Um, it serves both portions of the park by improving the neighborhood access to the park with the new entrance and parking, uh, restrooms that will be operational throughout all four seasons. And also provides a trailhead for the new trail network, um, that will encompass both portions of the park. So, we have talked about the south side of the park with Oakland County designing those trails and designing those boardwalks. But actually, that trail system will connect both, both ends of the park. So, having completed that review of the schematic design package, Turner Construction estimates the value of the construction, including hard and soft costs, at approximately seven million. With the authorization of this item tonight, the project team will proceed to site plan approval and seek to complete construction documents and have that completed by the end of July. Um, these drawings, uh, will allow Turner Construction to generate a guaranteed maximum price, uh, proposal for final costs. And then we would bring that proposal back to you in July and look for your approval so that we could put a shovel in the ground in August. And as a reminder, this project is looking to open May of next year. So, um, tonight, what I'm asking is your approval, uh, for the expenditure of four hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, two hundred and twenty-nine, um, for both OHM and Turner Construction to move forward to get those construction documents. Um, I would not be asking this without you first seeing, uh, the schematics in the project, the design of the splash pad. Um, and here to do that is Chris Riggert.
Good evening to the council. Uh, it's a pleasure and a privilege to be here this evening to present the schematic design package for Beechwoods Park Implementation Phase One. Uh, this represents hours of hard work by a, a number of people, uh, and lots of diligence. Uh, and I'd like to credit Ms. Fields and her team, she's brought her full, uh, team to the table to be able to review this plan and make sure that it meets with the needs and desires of the residents of Southfield, um, achieves a, a high level of ambition, it is achievable, and provides residents with a, a cutting-edge design that will benefit residents for years to come. Um, the graphic before you, uh, is a page out of the master plan document Ms. Fields talked about. Um, the process we've gone through to get through the master plan to the design, so, you'll see in the, the yellow, or excuse me, the, the white circled area, that's the focus for the, the first phase of the project. Um, at the beginning of this project, we established a number of goals, um, that have guided this project, and, and these remain true, um, and have guided us, uh, to date. One that I would add here, however, that we've identified as we continue to move forward, is inclusive. Uh, making sure that everybody has access to this park, everybody can enjoy this park regardless of age or ability. Um, this graphic on the page here is, uh, the outcome of the master plan, uh, project that we undertook maybe three years ago. Um, you can see the activation of the full park transforming what was a golf course into a multifaceted park that balances, uh, active and passive recreation. Our specific project, uh, again circled here in white, is located towards the center of this project. Uh, this is an enlargement of that area, and at the time of the master plan, was envisioned to include a new entrance, a new parking lot, a splash pad, uh, and a playground, as well as improvements to the, the maintenance facility located behind the recreation center. Again, this is another page from our master plan, um, and provides some of the highlights and what the vision was going into this schematic design phase. So, uh, we knew that we wanted this to be a, a substantially sized splash pad that could hit, fit up to three hundred kids, um, that this would include, uh, picnic shelters so that there's other activities happening here, uh, and people could spend, you know, more than just the day at the splash pad, but there's other events and activities, uh, as well as plenty of amenities and landscaping, uh, to provide comfort and enjoyment to people who come to the park. One of the projects that we've been looking at through the development of the schematic phase, and we wanted to share with you here, is Lily Pad Springs. Uh, this is a project that's located in a neighboring community in West Bloomfield. Um, they like to tout this splash pad as the largest in Michigan. Here, we can see some, some examples of what that, uh, splash pad entails. There's a number of spray features, but there's also a vertical structure with a large dumping bucket. Um, the reason I share this is because we've reviewed this design, and in fact, Director Fields and her team have met with those who manage this facility to understand, um, what works well, what doesn't, and what we can do better with our design to make a, a more functional, uh, design. And so, those lessons, and there are lessons that have been learned, have been incorporated into our design so that we can, uh, continue to improve and provide the best possible facility. Now, Ms. Fields also referenced that, um, there is a delineation between the county and the city portions of the park. I think, um, this underscores the importance of this project and its location. So, the graphic to the right shows you where that line in the sand is between the north portion of the park, which will be continued to be owned and managed by the city of Southfield, as well as the area to the south, which, um, will be managed by the county moving forward. Uh, our project, however, the one that we're for here, sharing with you tonight, sits right at the intersection of those two, uh, those two properties. And actually, this will be the new entrance, not just for the splash pad, but will also be the entrance and parking lot for the county's improvements, which will include a trail network that will encompass both the county and the city portions, uh, of the property. So, this is a really important, um, linchpin, if you will, that, that ties those two halves together and activates the park in ways that it hasn't been activated before. So, this is the outcome of our schematic design phase, this is the, the plan that we have developed. Um, and to walk through what these components are, uh, Beach Road is the left edge of the page. There's a new entrance drive, as well as a new pedestrian access point into the park. Um, the pedestrian access will tie up to, uh, Nine Mile, as intended to tie into a larger planning effort, um, that currently is underway for activating a, a non, non-motorized pathway along seventeen miles of Nine Mile Road. From the entrance drive, there's a new parking lot that's roughly a hundred and forty parking spaces. Um, and then you can see the splash pad, uh, which has an accom, three accompanying buildings that's connected to the parking lot with a plaza. Um, there's two picnic areas that are in close proximity to the splash pad, but far enough away that, um, users can use those picnic shelters independently of the splash pad, or they could make a day of it and come and have a birthday party at this, at the picnic shelter and go back and forth to the splash pad. Um, the last component that I'll highlight is the maintenance garage, uh, we did conduct an assessment of the existing garage. Our findings were that it, uh, is ripe for replacement, and so the project before you replaces that structure, uh, in place. These are some enlargements, uh, of the site plan here and some things to highlight, there will be a new sign with the park's new branding located at the entrance here. There is a left and right turn lane, um, our traffic engineers have assessed the, the anticipated volumes of traffic coming and going to the facility and determined that it won't have any substantial impact on beach, that the capacity of the road is sufficient. Uh, so we won't see traffic backups or anything like that from this facility. As you enter that entrance drive, and you'll see some renderings of this, will provide a visual of the splash pad facility, so it'll be the first thing you see as you, as you enter. Um, this image here shows the, the area south of the splash pad, which shows the picnic shelter, shows stormwater management. We've designed the stormwater management to integrate into the site, um, and help create spaces. And so you'll see that sort of around some of our larger paved areas. This is also the point where the county trail system is gonna pick up from just, uh, just to the east of that picnic shelter. So, um, this is sort of the handoff point between where, you know, our project meets the county's project as they work on their, their trail network. To the north of the splash pad is a second picnic shelter, these shelters are, uh, meant to hold around fifty people per shelter. Um, so a, a good-sized gathering. Uh, and you can see the plaza that connects the splash pad to the parking lot. Um, this space is meant to, uh, attract people whether you're using a splash pad or not, because we do anticipate that this, uh, park will be used year-round. In fact, the, the restrooms, we'll show you where those are located, um, are intended to be heated so that if you come out here during the winter months, even if the splash pad isn't active, which it will not be in the winter months, um, the restroom will be heated and accessible to people who may wanna be walking the trails in the winter. So, this plan seeks to activate the park not just during the, you know, the limited window of the splash pad, uh, use, but also the, the twelve months a year. Another point I'll highlight here is that we've distributed our barrier-free parking, that's the, the larger, uh, blue striped stalls. Um, we've distributed them throughout the site as opposed to located in one location. And that's because if, if you're someone who may need a larger parking space, we wanna provide options for you to park near any of the, the components of the design. Whether you're coming to the splash pad, you're going to the trails, you're going to the picnic shelter, there's three separate locations so that we're catering to people regardless of their ability, we're welcoming, welcoming everybody. And then the last thing I'll note is that to the top right, you see the trail sort of ends, that ties into an existing cart path so that, um, you know, we're, we're utilizing some of the pathways that are in, in place so we can realize a larger trail network. So, the start of the show here, the splash pad, um, you can see the, the hard black line surrounding the pad, that's the limits, this is a sixty-three-hundred square foot splash pad. This is actually larger than the example that we showed you from West Bloomfield by a couple hundred square feet and can comfortably fit, uh, on the pad area at one time, two hundred and fifty kids within the fenced area, because this is a facility that's anticipated to be, uh, require a small fee for entrance. We can, we're, we're designing to three hundred people within the fence at any one given time. So, within this, there's not just a splash pad area, there's plenty of seating areas, um, areas with shade sales for, uh, for shade during the summer months. And then any of the space within the fence that's shown as green, uh, is intended to be, uh, artificial turf so that there is a softness to the design, and there is a place you could maybe roll out a, a beach towel, um, but you're not getting all the dirt and debris that comes with natural turf so we can keep the, the system running smoothly. This is a recirculating system, um, will have a, an underground tank of something like seven thousand gallons that'll be treated and recirculated. So, here's some views of, uh, the design, so this is, Beach Road is at our back, uh, we're kind of floating over top of the parking lot. You can see the parking lot, um, isn't just straight, it kind of follows the, some of the geometry of the fairway, uh, that's out there currently. Um, you can see as well, some of the stormwater management, uh, components that help, uh, right here, help divide the parking lot from some of the recreation areas. In addition, we've built up, and you'll see this in some of our renderings, we've built up a little bit of grade here so that if you are, you know, using the facility, if you're over here at the splash pad or picnicking, you don't feel like you're doing it right next to a parking lot, we're using the landscape to help provide a more enjoyable experience. I'll highlight here that, you know, this is a good view to show that picnic structure that, you know, you could see a, a family here having a pic, a, a birthday party uh, with kids that could run into the facility and then come back out, you know, all the day long. This is the entrance plaza, so when you get dropped off at the, the drop-off point and you're entering the splash pad, this would be your view. Um, we've got, uh, poles here that are misting poles, so even before you get into the splash pad, maybe you come here to take a run, maybe you come for some other reason, um, you can still enjoy some components of the splash pad with these misting, uh, poles. And actually, the, the product that we're using is a brand-new product from Vortex, um, that we don't believe has been installed anywhere else in southeast Michigan. So, this will be unique to this project. Um, you can see here the grade that I'm talking about building up, and we're using that for some seating elements around the edges and using shade and, and other seating to create a really unique space. This building right here is the admissions building, so as you come up, this is the window you come to, to, to get your tickets and then work your way into the facility. You can see the tipping bucket up above, the splash pad itself reaches a height of thirty-five feet at its tallest point, we believe, uh, that it may be one of the taller ones in Michigan. Um, and then the restroom structure is to the left here, that's the structure that will be heated. It'll have gang restrooms, um, with multiple, uh, stalls in them, they'll have family restrooms, concessions, and, uh, drinking fountains. This is an overall view of the pad itself, so you can see there's quite a large area within the fence. Um, and, uh, the, the design of the structure itself, I've got an updated one from the supplier here, or the, uh, the splash pad designer at the end of the, of the deck, but you can see some of the spaces surrounding this, so not only is it a pad you come to splash around and play on, but there's seating and shade kind of all around here. These green areas are the areas that would be the artificial turf. So, not only could you, like I said, roll out your beach towel, but you could maybe use that to set up some cabanas, some flexible use spaces that, um, allow for some of that space within the fence without it being hard, you know, paved surface. This is a view from one of those shaded areas, um, showing sort of the high-level vision of what the inside of the splash pad could look like. Um, and these are a few slides from our splash pad designer, Vortex. Um, they started the project by asking, what, what is the theme that we wanna see here? Do we wanna blend into the, into the nature so that this feels like an extension of the park? And it was determined that, no, this actually wants to feel, um, like kind of a jewel that you stumble upon and find in the middle of the forest, that you're surrounded by nature, but that this is an escape to the beach. And so that's the theme for the splash pad, is bringing forward some of the iconography, colors, themes of a, of a day at the beach. In their design, they've prior, they, they designed based off of age, so there's three age groups that are within this, this, uh, pad design. There's the teenage area, the family area, and the toddler area, so these are divided by age. Um, and the designers, um, populate those areas with different splash components based off of those age groups. So, this is one of their diagrams here, and on the left, you can see it highlights the different types of play that happen at the splash pad. Sensory, tactile, uh, kinetic, misting, you know, the different types of things that activate, um, uh, different levels of interest from, from kids and from users. So, here's their rendering of the splash pad. Um, you can see within this structure, it has two tipping buckets, it's got three slides, a number of different components on the vertical structure itself, and then surrounding the structure are, uh, a number of, of spray heads and spray features that, um, allow, you know, lots of play at the ground level without having to climb up the structure. So, here's a view from another angle, uh, again, lot going on here, um, this is, this is a sizable splash pad and will definitely be, uh, an iconic destination here in Southfield. Uh, and then the opportunity to brand, you know, the, the tipping bucket, uh, which is a favorite, you know, and so we're working with the designer to identify what are some of the, the key components, colors, things like that, that'll continue to evolve. But, these graphics, I think, illustrate the, the intent of where we've reached within the schematic design. Like Ms. Fields said, where do we go from here? With the approval this evening, we'll move to work with, uh, Planner Coats team to begin the site plan approval process. We'll go through design development and construction documents over the next fourteen weeks, uh, to provide Turner, uh, Construction with a constructed document set so they can begin, uh, construction this year yet with the overall intent of delivering a finished splash pad by Memorial Day, twenty-twenty-four. That's all I have for you, and thank you, thank you all for your time.
Alright, thank you. Alright. Councilman Fraser?
Yeah, um, the bathrooms, are they gonna have locked doors on them or, or not?
Yeah, so the, we're still designing exactly the configuration, but the intent is that when they get shut down, they would all be shut down. Um, so I think there'll be regulated hours, uh, from Parks and Rec, but, um, as of currently, there's, there's a vestibule that leads into the restroom structure
Mm-hmm.
that has a roll-up door that we'd be able to roll down, and at that point, all the restrooms would be secured.
Okay, 'cause I can see that. Could be a target for vandalism.
Absolutely.
Also, the, the, uh, material it's made out of should be something that can be cleaned up pretty easily.
Well, to that point, I, I failed to mention some of what we're exploring as materials. Um, what we're looking at is, um, you know, and you can't quite tell very well from our renderings here, and that's kind of on purpose because we're working through the design process, but the intent is that this is a, a stone material, a natural stone that would be veneered, uh, to the, to the building, and it would be a, probably a solid concrete block construction behind that, so very solid construction.
Okay, and I know it's real early in the, the design, uh, have you given any thought to the kind of, uh, landscaping, uh, trees and bushes and, and things?
That's what we're gonna pull forward, uh, quickly so we can submit to site plan approval. We don't have the exact species yet, but what I can say is from the, the plant selection, we're really focused on making sure that this is something that the city can maintain in the long term. And so we don't, you know, right now, we don't have a lot of flower beds or perennial beds, um, because of the level of maintenance that may be required. We have naturalized areas within the stormwater area, uh, and then beyond that, it's primarily sh- shade trees, ornamental trees, and then we also have evergreens to help buffer some of the surrounding properties.
Okay, the reason I say that, I've been thinking about that, to make it a, an attractive thing that people want to use year-round, sugar maple trees because of the color in the fall. Also, it could be kind of a project for the Parks and Rec to have the sugar maples when they get large enough to have the, probably someone that works with maple syrup come out and put on a class for the kids, here's where maple syrup comes from by drilling trees and collecting the sap. Also, I know the monarch butterflies, and I've talked about that, have butterfly bushes that will attract all kinds of bees and butterflies, and even perhaps have professional beekeepers put some beehives out there that would be protected from the, the people walking up and down the street, or down the trails, but also classes for young people to show how nature and civilization go together.
It's an excellent suggestion.
So I think it would be an ideal thing, and I know our calendar features a lot of photography in the area and that, you know, especially with the sugar maples or the maple trees, that leaves change color would be a draw for people to come out there and just, in the fall, just see what it's like and populate the park. So, those are my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Banks?
Thank you. Did you say the splash pad could accommodate between three and five hundred children?
The design, is this on?
No, it is.
Currently, the design of the splash pad is, and there's different ratios you can use, but the comfortable ratio is twenty-five square feet per kid, and so we can fit two-hundred-and-fifty.
Two fifty to three hundred, yep. Seems like a lot of children.
Well, and we will be monitoring that as well, you know, that we, we had the numbers for two fifty to three hundred, and that's, we had to choose a space that would accommodate a great number of people, but at the same time, through living with it, as we go forward, through living with it and managing it and being out there, we'll be able to assess how many people we actually can fit comfortably and safely. So I hear your comment.
And then, do you know how many people the lily pad accommodates?
I believe, boy, I'd have to guess, but I'm going to say a hundred and fifty to...
I believe theirs can fit more, but they limit their, they limit the number of people except the fact that a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, I don't think it's more, but they do, they do limit the number of people, and they operate theirs on a two-hour basis as well. So when someone comes in, they pay for two hours, after two hours, they leave.
Okay, that, thank you. And then, last question regarding the splash pad, the slides, at the end of the slide, do they just fall onto the turf? I mean, usually you fall into a swimming pool or, looks like there's a little bit of water, but I don't want some sore behind, like...
So there is, as you can see from the two in this image here, there is standing water at the bottom of that, so when you come down, you're stopped by water, you hit standing water.
Yeah, you can't see it as well, it's even on the bottom of the slide, the standing water.
Okay, as long as they're not going to go zoom into the sand or the concrete.
No, we don't want them to zoom either. You're right, absolutely.
And this company will assure us that that's not going to happen? They're not going to slide right onto the turf or?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Cruz?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Will be, so is there going to be a fee just to get in?
Mm-hmm, yeah, there will be a fee. We don't have those designed yet or may, or on paper, but there will be a daily fee for residents and non-residents.
Okay.
And we won't be renting those facility, the shelters that first season. People will be able to use them, but until we live in that space, it's much like Councilman Banks was talking about, how many people can we actually put on that pad, on that splash pad? We'll be living with that, that facility, the bathrooms, the traffic coming and going, and the people coming and going, the times of day, and learning about the facility before we rent those shelters, but we will be charging a daily rate, for sure.
Okay, that's understandable. Can you tell me, I mean, I know I've seen the pictures and everything, but this first phase, if you will, what holes on the golf course are we talking about? Like, one through three, or we're re...
You know, the, it's a great question. It's, it's actually, well, it's the ninth hole, so if you're behind the recreation center and you're looking straight back, you're in the ninth fairway, yes. So it's just to the, just to the right of that a little bit, and you're coming in off of Beach Road, you know, at this new entrance. So as you're coming in, you're, you're coming in at almost the ninth tee. So, and that leads into the parking lot, and then you have that wow factor of driving into the facility, seeing the parking lot, and you'll see the splash pad first thing, and that shelter is there as well. And then you'll, as you come into the parking lot, we've, we've really taken a lot, and we're still going to do a lot, a lot more work, but we're really looking at what it feels like to park in that parking lot, and as you walk up, being able to go into the entrance. So we want all the, you know, all the folks to navigate and the traffic to flow toward that entrance and not cross through the parking lot in different, in different ways. So OHM and Turner have worked with us and really focused on the safety of moving people through that facility, so...
All right, cool. Is that going to, I'll do something with the mosquitoes over there? I know that's not in your purview, but still.
We do our best.
And last question, so in terms of parking with this, is it going, we're going to increase the parking?
The parking is, yeah, the parking's at about a hundred and forty, it's a little bit over a hundred and forty, maybe a hundred and forty-five if I'm not mistaken. There is overflow parking on the other side of the facility in the recreation center, but we're hoping that, that amount of cars, that amount of spaces will be able to house the cars that are coming in. But again, living with that, you know, with this, we all know that this is the first phase, right? This is the first part of the development of that park, and we're doing it in such a fashion that we can add on, right? So if you're coming into the parking lot now, and we have the splash pad, and we have the shelters, and we have the year-round bathrooms, the county is developing that trail system, our next path over would connect us really to that parking lot up front and go toward the golf range. And there's a snow hill back there, and there's other parts of the park that are still primed for, for development. But as we develop the park, we're leaving the door open to continue phase two and phase three. So we hope that those spaces can accommodate, but at the same time, we know in the back of our head that it's not too, too far of a walk to go to the front of the facility.
Sure, okay. Well, I think it looks great.
Thank you.
I'm looking forward to seeing it come to fruition, so, but, so thanks for all you guys' work so far.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing phase one.
Yes, thank you so much. And you know, real quick, I didn't introduce Najana from our Parks and Recreation Department, who's our budget analyst, and she's here and has done a lot of work as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Taylor?
Yes, thank you. This is like, I think, the second or third time I've seen this, and it looks great, and I get excited about it every single time. I just have a little questions that I would like to ask. And I think you answered most of them. You will, will you need a lifeguard for this area?
You know, we had a conversation at council president, and we will have staff there. Whether we call them lifeguards or attendants, I can tell you that, you know, you saw the, if you can show the picture again, you saw the slides, and yes, it's nice to boast that it's as high up as it is because kids love that, right? From all ages, we've got the small slides, the larger slides. But we're going to have to have an attendant on that meeting area. It's like a platform that you can go up another wave to the, to the next higher slide. So whether we call those folks on the splash pad, lifeguards or attendants, we have to have them trained, so they will be first responders, right? They'll have CPR, first aid, AED training. So what title we give them right now, we haven't, you know, we haven't decided on, but they will be trained staff that will be able to react to any potential slips or, you know, coming down the slide or any scrapes or anything like that. So we will staff it, and they, they will be certified in first aid and CPR. It is not to the extent of a lifeguard in that we don't have to have a WSI. I don't have to include training throughout the summer for lifeguards, you know, every single week to make sure we do skill testing. But, you know, when you have that many people and you're dealing with kids and you're dealing with adults, you need some, some management on-site. We have large bathrooms there. We can expect that parks or facilities maintenance will come in once in the morning and once at night, and that's going to do the job for the bathroom, so we'll have to have some maintenance folks there as well. So there's going to be some operational costs to this, to the splash pad, but I think our residents will love it, and we will manage it and keep it clean and take good care of it, so we have it for a lot of years.
Yep, thank you. I wanted you to talk about that. The other thing is the hours of operation. I know that we'll be charging for that particular area. All the other services or events and programs and stuff that's going on at Beechwoods, most people will be coming in the other entrance on, you know, for basketball.
They can come in either entrance, yep. They can come in either entrance. I mean, because really, and as Chris explained, when we've designed the parking lot so that it is welcoming to both splash pad users and trailhead users for Oakland County parks, or they're just, they're our residents, right? They're, whether they're for, coming in for the trails or they're coming into the splash park, but that entrance there will accommodate that south end, yep, that south end that will be an advantage to the trail development there. It will be right at the trailhead. So, yeah, but you're right, if you're coming in to play basketball and whatnot, yes, you're still using that original entrance.
Okay, and what would be your hours for the splash pad?
We do not have the hours designated just yet. Count on Memorial Day through Labor Day. I have had questions on whether or not, you know, it's our, it's our aquatics feature, right, for our city, so we want it open for the longest amount of time we possibly can, but we also want to take care of the very expensive mechanics of the system. So we want to make sure that we are opening it in timely fashion, but shutting it down so that it doesn't get cold and freeze on us so that we can't blow that system out. So we'll, we'll, we'll definitely be doing some more homework on that and research on that.
Okay, great. And I know that Beechwoods has a very active homeowners association. Are we communicating with them what's going on?
We will be sending out, yep, we will be sending out some information to the homeowners associations. Also, we've got a couple of neighbors that are very, very close to us, adjacent to the, to the park, that we'll be reaching out to between myself, OHM, and Lee Schultz in engineering. We've got relationships there, so we'll be having some conversations as well.
Okay, and keeping this council updated too, because we're excited about everything that's going on.
Oh, absolutely.
And I know we had one conversation before, and I think it was with Vortex, I'm not sure, but we were going to put signs up to let them know what the end project was going to look like, so anybody passing by will have an idea of what's going on there rather than saying, hmm, what's happening?
Absolutely.
We were in discussion about that, is that still something that could happen?
We can make that happen, right, Chris?
Construction signs?
Mm-hmm, some concept design signs, absolutely.
You know, we see them for storage buildings and everything else, so it'd be nice to see that.
Get everybody excited. Yeah, that's a great idea. Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right, Councilman Brightwell?
I have a couple, a couple questions. Is this intended to be best in show, you know, relative to splash pads in southeast Michigan? Is this intended to be best in show?
Is it intended to be best in show?
Yeah, like, you know, the best thing in, you know, best splash pad in southeast Michigan? It's going to be bigger than Bloomfield Hill, is that correct?
It is bigger than West Bloomfield. Now, who else is designing them right now? Who's creating them for this upcoming season? I couldn't tell you. It's going to be the best here. I can tell you that it would, I don't know how you would rate it to West Bloomfield. It's larger. I think that, well, I have friends there and they know I love them. I think that we have learned some things from their work there and their project there, and they were very gracious and very kind to share. If we had it to do over again, we might do it this way. So not so much in the structure of it, but the logistics and the travel of people. Where we really have an advantage is not just the space that we have because it's a beautiful park, and so we have the ability to make it larger, but it's where we put our shelters. And the fact that we can have it close by and you can see the splash pad, West Bloomfield had a little bit of a challenge in that they had some space constraints, and so I think they're going to even do some things about moving where their folks can have their birthday parties so that they can see the splash pad, because it's fun. Even if you're not in it and you're looking at it, you're around it, it's very festive and upbeat. So I think we've learned a lot from, from our neighbors and our friends. They have beautiful facilities. If you go out to West Bloomfield, it is a beautiful splash pad, and they have done a remarkable job.
Okay, all right. So this will be a destination facility? In essence, that's what you're saying, it'd be nice enough to be a destination?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. The other question I have, which I think Ms. Banks touched on, is the slide, when I, when I look at this, I see maybe five inches of water. Are those, we don't, we don't want people to have a hard landing in that five inches of water, is that correct?
That's correct. That, when, if you were to see it close up, and maybe we can bring some pictures back next time, that will give you a little bit, a little bit closer look at the bottom of the slides. It's very, I would say that it's a very great question. It's ours too, and it's the first place that we, when we go and look at the splash pads, we go and look at the bottom of the slides. We look at the material at the bottom, we look at the lip of the slide, but they design them for ease of motion going forward, and at the same time, the water's slowing them down a little bit, so they're not sliding, as Councilman Banks said, across that, across that hard surface.
Okay, well, clearly, that, that hard landing, we don't want anybody to have a hard landing, but one of the things that you might recall, when we did our tour of pools and rec areas, they indicated they did not want slides. Most of them regret they had slides, where they did have slides. Is this is part of the design of the, the best practice with respect to splash pads now to have these slides, so this is the best, best in practice?
Sure, and, and I appreciate you saying that. What, what we heard on that tour too, just to be a little bit more specific, we heard that a lot of the indoor pools were very mindful about how they chose slides because of sightlines and the number of lifeguards that they had to have. So it wasn't that they were against having a slide, it's that where they put their slide in relationship to the rest of the pool. So if I could view something from here, but I couldn't see the entrance to the slide, I had to have two more staff, one at the bottom, one at the top. So to answer your question, yes, this is best practices. We've got Vortex who does things all across nationally, and this, this design is, is really, really pretty spectacular.
And I think the operative word you used was sightline, and that was specifically, there was a blind spot in a couple of those areas that they regret that they had those blind spots.
Yes.
Okay, so this will provide us with sightlines, so no one is laying out there dead and we don't see them?
Absolutely not.
Okay, all right, the next question, what is the potential cost for this? Do you have an estimate cost for this particular design?
Just for that item?
Yes.
The splash?
Want to come up here? I don't want to guess, but I think I know.
No, that's all right. So the, the, there are a lot of components for the project. I mean, the overall estimate from, from Turner Construction has been seven million for the project overall. Seven, seven million for the splash pad proper for the direct cost is one point two million for this, this portion of the project in front of you. That's just for what's on the screen right here.
Okay, all right, that, that's the number I was watching around. When you said seven million, that was one, okay, it was one point for the splash.
One point two for the, the splash pad, the spray head... 1.2 for the, the, the splash pad, the spray heads, the fountain, uh, all the manifolds, underground piping, underground storage tank. Yeah.
Okay. Uh, the next question. Uh, this summer, this past summer, or sometime last year, when we started really looking at pools and doing our, getting ready, there was a paper, there was an article in the Free Press, in order, and I don't think it was the South Soul Sun, but it was a paper about the Oak Park, you know, Royal Oak Splash Pad and why it was being shut down so often. And, uh, I'm hoping that we, it wa, it was because of circulation? It was, it had something to do with the plumbing of that, of those particular things that are built? Uh, we are avoiding those problems. Is that correct? That was a statement in the hope?
Yes, we are. Um, we are going with Vortex as our supplier manufacturer. And as important is we're going with Michigan Recreation Construction, who has a phenomenal, uh, history. Um, they put in the splash pad at, uh, West Bloomfield. And from what we were told, honestly, is it was seamless and they were on the spot. And they are easily accessible even afterwards. And, um, when we went through our, our bids, uh, for, um, the splash pad, we asked specifically for Michigan Recreation Construction. So we feel very, very positive and very, um, we're looking forward to working with them. So, um, no, hopefully we don't have any issues, uh, like Royal Oak.
Okay. Uh, I think the issue, I think the, the Free Press, the article kind of identified what the issue was. A poor, pure, uh, poor design, and it was something with the recirculation of the water or doing some, because it was, you know, germs in the water. So there was something. But I'm, I just throw it out there because it's, I'm, let me just say, I'm assuming you guys will make sure you, you look at whatever. Yeah, we, we don't, we now, we, we don't want to be transporting drunk, germs.
No, we have, right, right. We, the, the chemical balances are very important in splash pads, just like they are in pools. And, and we, this is, this is no difference. We will be maintaining.
Okay, good. And, um, you mentioned that potentially you would have 200, 200 kids there of, at one, yeah, at one time. And I'm assuming this, this will become a destination kind of, it's, it's, it's pretty. I would like to just get out there myself. It'd become a destination. Do you feel that from a traffic standpoint, we may have to put a, a blinking light out there on Beach Road or something? Uh, is that a, is that a possibility?
Uh, no. Uh, our traffic, our traffic engineering team has reviewed the traffic counts. We actually have traffic volumes from previous projects on Beach Road that we can use. We have real data. And, uh, from their, from their estimation and their, uh, engineering, they don't anticipate the need for that. There's no need to add additional lanes, uh, for traffic coming from Beach into the facility. So by their, their estimations, uh, there shouldn't need to be any additional accommodations on Beach Road. Uh, and we've engineered the entrance traffic accordingly.
Okay. So I, I assume this is a study in process, let's say come July of 2020. Well, three years, if this thing get popular, you know, you, you might have a, but, but right, is it right now, there's no need to, for a traffic light of a coming?
Yeah. And like, like Ms. Fields said, you know, this is, this is a facility that I think everybody will continue. We, we designed, uh, for the best case scenario, uh, with our best estimations. We'll continue to learn about it, right? So our, right now, our engineering tells us we don't need that level of accommodation. But like Ms. Fields said, something we'll continue to observe, you know, and understand.
Okay. And, and I think when I read the, but I read it earlier this afternoon. Would that be, are we targeting, what, July 2024 or something as a target date?
Um, May, May. Oh my gosh, May of '24.
May, okay. Thank you. All right. Thank you.
You, Councilwoman Hoag?
Thank you. Most of my questions have been asked and answered. Um, I think, uh, one of the things, this picture here doesn't depict the true design of our splash pad as far as having a gate surrounding the entire space, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure, because I'm seeing this, um...
These were provided, uh, separately by our splash pad designers, specifically to focus on splash pad design.
I think I saw a black iron, iron gate on one of the pictures, the entrance?
He'll show you.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Six foot height ornamental metal gate would be surrounding.
And, um, the existing recreational building will remain? No changes to that services and all that, like the basketball league and all that will continue?
Absolutely.
Perfect. Um, again, most of my questions were asked and answered. Um, the entrance to the park, we're going to have the Beach Road entrance. Is there another one? Did you say off Nine Mile?
Uh, no, I was referencing that there, there is a archer study, uh, ongoing right now for a non-motorized corridor along Nine Mile. So, hey, there's a planning effort to activate Nine Mile for pedestrians and cyclists. And so this project would seek to extend, this, this portion of the extension of the sidewalk right here would be by another project, but it would lead to the entrance to this new, uh, entrance into the park. So we would see additional pedestrian and non-motorized infrastructure.
Okay. I'm just concerned above that traffic right there because of the fact that we're creating a splash park. So we're going to obviously increase the volume right there. And it would be nice if we had another exit entrance light somewhere, but just throwing that out there. Um, other than on Beach Road, Beach Road.
This is the second.
I know. I'm, I'm just saying, it would be nice, a different road as well. Um, the splash pad, are we, uh, thinking about placing any type of, uh, system there? Like no music playing while the kids are out there?
There, there will be rules of operation there for sure. Uh, we will have a sound system out there for, um, announcements, emergencies, um, perhaps programs. But we'll definitely take in the noise ordinance. So there will be, there will be rules of operation for all of our, our folks that want to use a splash pad.
But even our sound system, will it be playing music or something while the kids are playing? We're thinking about?
We haven't talked about playing music during the operation of the splash pad. Um, we just have it for announcements.
Okay. And then, um, the city managed side, has all of that design been thought of? Or are we, just out of suggestion, but I just want to know.
It, it was, the master plan was designed and brought to, to council. Um, but the master plan is just that. It's, uh, it's a wish list and it is thoughts about how our residents have given us input on how they want the park designed. That's not saying that something couldn't be added or something could be talked about. So there is a design for the rest of the park. Um, the hub design that's next to the, um, the driving range. Um, so there's some amenities. We know that, um, a playground is going to be added to this particular area. Um, it would be closest, if you could bring it up, it would be closest to the further, yep, it would be right out there next to that, um, shelter. It's not part of this project. Um, but a playground will go, um, near that shelter area.
And we'll keep our tennis courts and the driving range for sure.
Absolutely.
Okay. Let me make sure of my questions before I go. I did think about the lifeguard. And I think that one picture was maybe, it probably gave too much water than what is going to be there. Because it looks like it's, and I'm like, oh, wow, that's a potential for danger there. But I think it's really flowing and not standing. Um, uh, I would like to say that is my neighborhood, and I know that we have a very active association. Um, the resident is here every week. Stacy Jackson is the president. Wave your hand, Stacy. And so, um, I'm sure she'd like to always be involved. As a matter of fact, she indicated to the residents to be here because this was going to be discussed. And, um, I am excited for it. Um, I just pray that, um, the traffic doesn't become too burdensome on homeowners and taxpayers in that area, because they signed up for something different. But you do have to change with times. I get it. And I'm sure we'll manage this the best we can. And so I am excited, very supportive of it. And I just say that we just continue to work with the Neighborhood Association. Like if we start seeing a increase of people running through the neighborhood, well, they'll talk to me if I'm still here. And then we'll, um, bring that up, but...
Well, what's been nice is we've had so many people involved in that master plan process. And then if you think back, um, I can't remember the month, but it was when Oakland County had their press conference out at Beachwoods. Um, and I know we had our mayor there and we had some council members. And we actually had the opportunity to take some folks around, uh, Beachwood to talk to them about, um, the plan and about Oakland County. And, um, they're excited because, you know, when, when we're bringing folks to the park, um, that's going to shine some light on Oakland County parks when they're having their, their trails there. So it really is a, a nice marriage. But I hear what you're saying, and we absolutely want to be good neighbors. Um, we, we're serving the residents, but boy, they're, they're right there. Um, and I think we're, we're always stepping mindfully going forward. So I hear you.
Okay. Thank you. That's all.
All right. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. Um, I was going to bring this up later under the council portion, but I'm not sure if you're going to be here, Terry. Um, it, and I'm not asking for an answer this evening, but within the next two weeks, can you provide council and the mayor with, um, what are the opportunities going to be this summer? Since we will not have a pool and we will not have a splash pad for the residents? People have been asking. I don't know if, and again, I'm not looking for an answer tonight. I don't know if we've, you know, made contact with some of the previous people. Someone said, oh, the schools are willing to let us utilize their space. If we could just have something, it would help us to answer questions on who they can contact if they've got any further questions or complaints. Thank you.
My pleasure.
Mr. Mayor?
I just had a quick question, because it's, it's a little hard to see on the map. So this, somebody pulls in the existing parking lot, they'll be able to walk over to the splash pad, correct? I just couldn't quite...
There's a gate there right now.
There'll be a, there'll be a pathway?
Yeah.
Good, because I think that's important.
Mm-hmm.
Somebody may want to use the other far distant, um, picnic shelter at the, especially if these two are occupied, but still go to the splash pad.
We've had nothing there at that end of the park. So, um, you're absolutely right. But yeah, we can open up that gate and it connects to the parking lot in front.
Wonderful. All right. That was all I had. Thank you. I, I think it's phenomenal. Uh, and it will be a, a big hit.
Thank you.
All right. Um, I did have, um, a couple of questions. You said the splash pad is about 1.2. And the total project that we're discussing now is going to come out to be about 7 million? Is that correct? And none of that touches what the county plans to do. So this is all city money. None of this comes from the county. Is that correct?
Nope. Um, we're getting, boy, I don't want to say the dollar amount, but they're splitting the parking lot cost with us. Um, we're getting some ARPA funds from them as well. Um, so they are partnering to an extent financially on this project.
Do you have an approximate number of what that would be?
I want to say two. Yeah, about two, two and a half million.
Okay. Um, the thing I would ask is if council can get some of these slides, I guess, once you have some updated pictures with what it will look like, um, to, you know, the total project. The, the other thing is, to my colleagues who are worried about safety and, and things, I've, I've taken my kids to ones that have been splash pads that have been free in different cities that have been, you pay for. These are really made with, with safety in mind. Um, I think some of the thoughts about the slides and, you know, they'll, the city will have the, the right people in place. As, as Ms. Fields mentioned, you don't necessarily need lifeguards, but you do need people there. And these are made with, with safety in mind. And I, I really think that some of the, the fears, uh, once you see it in person will, will go away, will be reduced. The other question I had is, as relates to the restrooms, will there be access to the restrooms from inside the fenced-in area? And if so, will those, you know, will someone be able to go in one side and out the other without paying?
So it's a good question. And there was a lot of discussion and thought put into this. Uh, so if you look at the graphic where you hear, there's an entrance portion here from where you, uh, you know, get your tickets here, you come into the fence, you can splash. There's an exit only portion over here. The entrance to the restrooms is actually right here. So there's a little divestment into the restroom building and it's outside the fence. And that's intended so that if you're a picnickler, if you're a, a user of the trail, that you have access to the restrooms. And then during the winter months, when the splash pad is, is not operational, there's still access to the restrooms. Uh, and that's actually, uh, a model that is similar to, uh, West Bloomfield. Their restrooms are outside the fences as well. So you leave, use the restroom, come back in.
How will, how will someone know, how will the attendant who's letting people in know that they've previously paid? wristbands? Okay. So as long as you keep it on long enough?
Absolutely.
Got it. Um, are there going to be any water fountains?
Yeah. There'll be water fountains, uh, at the restroom building right around here.
So people that don't pay that, you, as you mentioned, were like walking or jogging, will have access to that too?
We'll have filling stations for your water bottles too.
Okay. Perfect. And I, one, one last question. When do you think you're going to be coming back to us? The end of July, beginning of August?
End, end of July is, uh, little end of July is the GMP proposal, uh, which should, your players is, like, contract with by the project, all those, this is about the entire project cost, so, you know, the goal. So I'll come back then, do a little bit of that for second rule as well.
Okay. Um, Councilwoman Hoag mentioned that, you know, there's, there are neighbors in the area. Do we know what, what type of noise this will bring?
You know, I, we talked to West Bloomfield, and West Bloomfield has, um, a couple of housing units, and they have apartment units that are right on top of the splash park. And they have had no complaints whatsoever. So I can't guarantee, um, but I can tell you that our splash pad is away off of the parking lot and into the park. So it's, it's well into the ninth hole, um, into the ninth fairway. Um, so it's not right at the entrance there. Um, and the parking lot is the closest to the residence itself. So, um, noise of the kids and noise of the, the water or the sounds of the, of the water. Um, I, I would hope that, um, they are far enough away. And like I said, we really are going to take a look at the number of people, um, that that, that splash pad can house comfortably. And we're going to learn.
Well, will people be able to rent it out?
The splash pad itself?
Yes.
Not that first year.
Okay.
And maybe not at all. I, I don't want to lead folks to believe that you can pay enough money to rent the splash pad out for two or four or six hours. What we have to make sure is that we're mindful that when we do that, we're taking an amenity away from. So, um, I can't tell you that it would be done for a half a day or, or a full day. We may look at a, a couple hours for a party, uh, but that wouldn't happen until that second year. So...
Okay. Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilwoman Hoag?
I just wanted to say, the mayor and I, we were talking, just as a reminder, there was an outdoor pool there.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we were agreeing that, uh, the children, the noise of children is happy noise. So, um, we, we hope that, you know, it'll be acceptable and so, good thing.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cruz?
Yeah. Mr. President, I'd like to move that we authorize and proceed with the design development and construction documents for Beachwood Park.
Everyone supports. It's been moved by Councilwoman Cruz, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, for the authorization to proceed with di, design development and construction documents for the Beachwoods Park as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. I know we're going to tr, transition over. Um, but next is a presentation and discussion regarding a proposed savvy sliders on 12 Mile between Northwestern and Franklin Road. The Sam's Club.
I'm sorry, Sam's.
Costco's not there yet.
Thank you. So we have a presentation and discussion regarding our proposed savvy sliders on 12 Mile between Northwestern Highway and Franklin Road. This is on the north side of West 12 Mile Road. Existing zoning is B3 general business. Special use requests to allow for standalone restaurant with a drive-through. And then we'll also be discussing the site plan details. This is a former bank site. It's going to be converted. Existing conditions. This will come up in discussion a little bit later, but based on the drive-through of restaurants, a wall is required. And counsel can, in lieu of a wall, substitute a fence or other landscaping screening. But this is an existing condition that we have to deal with because the site is tight. Current zoning is B3. Future land use is consistent. This is a proposed site plan. Some details of the parking circulation and landscape plan. Elevations. And then these are some concept renderings of the proposed facility with the floor plan. And at this point, I'll turn it over to the petitioner to make some additional comments and we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. This is a discussion only tonight. Thank you.
So can you please give your name and address for the record?
Chester Stempian, architect, 298-95-Greenfield, Southfield. This is a former bank that works well with what we're trying to do because it already has a drive-through behind the building. And modifications are minor. The site can't accommodate the number of parking spots that are required by the ordinance. But since our last meeting, we've been able to get four spots just to the north of the site that you could see hatched. And then there's a striped walkway back to our site. There's also a large bank canopy that was accommodating where the drive-through window is. We'll get rid of that and have an overhang up thirteen and a half feet high over that drive-through window. Fire marshal was concerned about the width of the parking drive. Parking, well, not the parking, but the driveway around the building. We've modified it so that we have a minimum of 20 feet of driveway width as you exit the site. Other than that, I believe we've accommodated questions that were brought up in our previous reviews.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions? Councilwoman Frazier?
Is thirteen and a half feet high enough for box trucks and things to come through the drive-through?
Through the chair, our minimum requirement is thirteen and a half feet for our EMS facility. So that's the standard that we use.
I'm not gonna be the one to replace him.
Counsel, any other questions? Any other questions, counsel? Oh, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Bing.
I was gonna ask the same question. How high can they go? I mean, if some of these vehicles with, like, the box trucks, how high are those?
Well, again, our standard for all canopies, and it's based on our fire rescue, is thirteen and a half feet. So that will accommodate most box trucks and our ambulance vehicles and other apparatus. Much higher than that wouldn't make sense with the pitch of the roof and the size of the building.
Okay, as long as it will accommodate that, because I recently saw a box truck get stuck under a canopy and I'm like, oh, that's not a good situation. And then, I'm sorry, I am not familiar with this new proposed restaurant. I just noticed that there's a lot of them popping up all over the place. Could you please tell us, and I know that's not part of this presentation, but what is this? Is it chicken? Is it hamburgers? What are you serving here?
Well, it's general fast food facility that is coming into this area. Sliders are a name for a smaller type burger.
So if I could, it's similar to White Castle as far as like the smaller, you get smaller buns and smaller, whether it's hamburger, chicken, or fish. They're sold in smaller packaged.
But will they be selling hamburger, chicken, and fish?
I believe so.
Yes.
Okay.
And you recently approved the former Taco Bell on Eight Mile near Sam's Club to be a savvy slider. And one of their missions is to take older buildings and revamp them as opposed to tearing down and building new. So they work with existing buildings that have been vacant for a while.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
I think you answered this question before. Does it have another within the geographic area that was savvy slider? Another franchisee?
We have one.
In the strip mall.
This will be the second one in Southfield. I believe there's one being built on Greenfield Road in Oak Park, just across from Northland Development. But they're starting to come into the southeast Michigan area.
There's one at 12 Mile and Southfield in the Strip Center?
Oh, is there? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's with Happy Food, Happy Pizza.
They're affiliated with one of the pizza. Is it Happy Pizza?
It's Happy, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Okay, counsel, no more questions? Mr. Crow?
Yeah, just through the chair, Chester, could you make sure a representative from Savvy's here for the public hearing?
Okay.
Great.
Thank you. Perfect. Thank you. Next, we have a presentation and discussion regarding a proposal, proposed residential duplexes on Westland between Evergreen and Prescott.
Thank you. I'll do an introduction and then we'll turn it over. Petitioners Habitat for Humanity. These are three duplexes proposed for, on the south side of Westland between Evergreen and Prescott. These are right across the street from the duplex that was recently constructed in 2022. And if you may recall, a couple of years ago, counsel rezoned these parcels from single-family to RT attached single-family to allow for duplexes to be built as an infill project. And this will result in a total of three duplexes and six new units. This is existing conditions on the site. At one time, there was single-family many years ago in the area. Site is now vacant. Existing conditions from Westland. This is across the street. This is the duplex that was built by Habitat for Humanity and completed in 2022. There'll be some slight design revisions that they learned. Here, the garages are on the interior. The new proposal will have them on the exterior. There'll be one-car garages, but they'll be closer to one and a half-car garages to allow for some more room and storage. Again, the zoning is compatible with what's being proposed. This is the design layout. And landscape concept plan for each of the units. Floor plan, and then new elevations that show the stone veneer around the perimeter of the facility with the garage on the outside. So with that, I'll turn it over to Habitat's representatives and the builder to make a few more comments and we'll be happy to answer any questions that counsel may have.
All right, thank you. Please give your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Scott Milliken, 150 Osmond, Pontiac, Michigan, Habitat for Humanity, Oakland County. As stated, this is phase two of the duplex development that we're doing. The first one was successful. And this one, we did have a little bit of a learning curve. So we did do a few changes. Although we are going to follow the same suit of doing high-efficiency housing again so that we can build the tightest building envelope that can be constructed. If you recall, the original duplex was the first all-electric duplex in Southfield and was coming in at her score of 40, which really means that your energy bills are extremely low for sustainability of the housing. So these ones are gonna follow the same concept. We're pricing them both ways to all-electric and gas and electric. The energy credit's no longer available. So I just wanted to point that out. That's the difference as well from the last time. So we're not sure which direction we're gonna go yet until we get through the bid process. The reason for that is because we are taking a loss on every building that we're constructing in the community. Our average loss on these duplexes is about $40,000 to $50,000 per building. So per unit, that's, you know, $20,000 to $25,000 that we're losing per unit that we're subsidizing. So without the energy credit for the all-electric program being available anymore, that might change our direction on utilizing gas again.
Counsel, any questions? Councilwoman Brightwell?
You might have mentioned this, but I'm having difficulty hearing you. What is the proposed market value for these homes, this location?
Sure. So across the street, which is very similar in nature, we just closed at 170. It was the sales price per unit.
Okay. Okay, and you mentioned something about lessons learned. And so what, and this might have been mentioned too, but I'm having difficulty hearing you. So what lessons have been learned in this project?
Sure. So the main thing that we wanted to change, and again, we absorbed a previous plan from a previous builder that went through the process with you all to get the zoning changed. And then we took over the building plans for the units. So we did produce that previous plan. What we'd like, what we're doing and proposing here is that we're separating the garages to either end of the building so that there is no shared driveway space. So that's one thing. The other thing is that in addition to, and we will be adding, I think you can see them there. They are there, the small boxes in the backyards. Those are sheds. We did have those on the first units as well, but the garage area is a slightly larger garage than it was on the first unit, as Terry pointed out.
Okay, and so how did these lessons come to you? How were they learned?
Well, to be honest with you, it's a matter of we absorbed someone else's design and we have the ability to put our own design forward as well. So that and feedback from our occupants at the other site as well.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Wait, Councilwoman Frazier?
Yeah, you're switching the garages from the center to the outside? Is there a concern about noise going between the two units?
No, there's the same dividing wall that is going to be a sound barrier between the units and also a fire barrier between the units as well. So we shouldn't have any differences in that. As the garages on the original units weren't the full depth of the building, it was still living space that was separated by what's commonly known as a party wall in the building industry, and that's so that you can't hear the party on the other side.
Okay, now, will one person own both units or two people? Because it's all on one piece of property, right?
So it is a condominium is what it's designed as, is a condominium complex. So it will be individual owners per unit.
Okay, all right. So it has to be, almost has to be a condo in order to do it that way?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Bing.
Mr. Frazier answered my question. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
I think it's good to point out, and I don't, I'm a, I think I know the figure, but I may have forgotten it. What the annual utility bill is with all of the energy efficiencies?
It's about $30 a month.
I'm sorry?
About $30 a month.
$30 a month for heat and light? It's incredible. And that was one of the things when we dedicated last fall the first unit. I was astounded with all the things that they built into these units. And this is affordable housing, so obviously utilities are an important component of that. Thank you.
Thank you. The only question I have is these are very deep lots. And I see where you have the sheds, but is that going to be a very big burden for these homeowners to maintain a lot that large in the backyard? You know, obviously, this is a Habitat home. We don't want to put any extra burdens on the homeowners. So I'm just looking at those very large backyard lots.
I think, and you can correct me, Scott. The intent is just a small yard, like two, about the shed and the rest of the yard. Less, the rest of the lot is gonna be natural, wooded.
That's correct.
So there's not, there's not, the intent is not to have all lawn in the backyard. It's to preserve some of the natural elements. You just have a small yard in the backyard for playing, cutting, or sitting. But the rest, you can see, you can see the wood line here.
Correct.
So two-thirds of the backyard is gonna be maintained in its natural state.
I just also want to make sure that our code enforcement area is going to be okay with that because just based on some calls I've gotten, even with wooded areas, sometimes they can get picky with homeowners.
Yeah.
So I just, again, I want to make sure we're not putting any extra burdens on our homeowners.
Sure, and that's all part of, these are affordable homes. They're providing homeownership opportunities to people who wouldn't otherwise be able to afford. They are attractive units and we have sustainability because we're preserving a good portion of the yard in its natural state.
Beyond that, might I add that our homeowner program does include landscape, home maintenance, yard maintenance courses. So more so than even the general first-time homeowner like myself having no glasses before I had my first house.
Okay, and I believe I mentioned this at the groundbreaking to the mayor, but this would be a perfect lot. I mean, obviously, this is the plan, but this would be for one we had our original discussion with about accessory dwelling units and tiny discussion with about accessory dwelling units and tiny homes where there was a, I believe it was a cottage. I forgot the official term, where you can utilize different, almost pods of homes. I forgot, it was something cottage where that would utilize more of the land to create more home opportunities. So again, that's just something that we can keep in mind for when we have some of these deeper lots. We can add more homes, again, the same size, and create more homeownership opportunities for more people, so.
In this particular case, we try to respect the scale of the existing single-family. So the setbacks in the size of the buildings match because this is more of an infill development, but that, they're called garden cottage.
Garden cottage. Thank you.
Yeah. On larger lots, we may be able to look at that.
Yeah, and the house that is across the street from this development fits in very well with the neighborhood.
Yeah, so that was all intentional.
Absolutely. Councilman Frazier?
Yeah, when you asked the question, it brought another question to my mind. If these are condos, are they on our records and deeded as condos? Or are they on our records as single-family dwellings?
The first phase is condos on your records.
So they have to be responsible for a lot of their own maintenance and things different than, I mean, are they going to have condo dues and stuff like that?
That's correct. There are bylaws, just like any other condo association, albeit though typically in a situation like a duplex, you draw a line down the center of the duplex, and the person is responsible for their half, same with the exterior maintenance. So it's not as involved because you don't have shared spaces or common elements that you normally would have in a larger-scale development. But the dues are about fifty dollars a month on the first phase, which covers a reserve fund for that shared driveway as well.
Okay, so with condos, we don't do trash pickup. They have to do their own trash pickup? They're going to have to do that too?
We would probably do the trash pickup for the fee of one-hundred-and-sixty-five because of the character of the street. That would be worked out. The other thing, Scott, one water meter or two per unit?
There's two.
Two, okay. All right.
Interesting. Okay. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, this is not related to a site. What type of waiting list do you have for your homes?
It's very, very long. We have a very high need in Oakland County for affordable housing. I could report back on some numbers for you if you'd like.
No, I'm just, I was just interested that you had a large list.
There's more than enough demand, and also, we've been able to generate support as well in order to fund these units. You know, so we have generated both the demand on the need side and then also on the financial support side as well.
Okay. Let me just ask this. These individuals are vetted from a standpoint, their ability to pay. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. So the home buyers receive a home mortgage, just the same as any other home buyer would. The difference would be that they have access to a mortgage product that someone walking off the street wouldn't have access to, which is an affordable product, meaning that the interest rates are a little bit lower, albeit though they still need the same type of credit standing that anyone else would have. So some individuals may be in our program for a year or two where they are going through Habitat University to get financial coaching and education in order to get ready for homeownership prior to actually buying.
How many, just nationwide throughout your organization, how many defaults do you have? Only, what percentage of your clients are default on what you're giving them?
Our delinquency rate in Oakland County is eight percent. Our foreclosure rate last year was zero.
Okay, you say eight percent is what?
Delinquency, ninety days and above is eight percent, and our foreclosure rate was zero last year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
I just want to stress that these people don't, that end up in any Habitat house are vetted by Habitat. They go through the Habitat Financial Program so that they're successful in the house. So that's why there are foreclosures because, and once you're, and I can say this, once you're a Habitat family, you're always a Habitat family. They have counselors that work with these families. It's like all of the other houses that through the SNRI that were Habitat homes. All of those people had to qualify, and again, it's, as Habitat always says, it's not a handout, it's a hand-up. So they get this assistance. The construction costs, as you heard Scott just say, are higher than what they sell the house for. So they're getting a subsidy on a new home, but they have to be able to live within their means with that, and that's what Habitat does.
It was good to hear that answer, and, but you said you have eight percent. So you work with that eight percent, so there are no foreclosures?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. That's fine. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. No other questions from council. We'll see you back here on May twenty-second.
Sounds great. Thank you.
If I could, Scott, do the homeowners still have to put sweat equity as part of?
Correct, yeah. Part of the program is three hundred hours of sweat equity. On these particular homes, they'll be doing seventy-five hours on each home, the home itself, and then they're welcome to do the hours at another nonprofit or community outreach if needed.
Thank you. So we'll see you back in three weeks for final site plan approval, hopefully.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have a proposed resolution for a ninety-day extension of the moratorium with regard to the impact that indoor ice chests have on the city, outdoor ice chests, I'm sorry.
Yes, thank you. So this is our last planning item. If you recall, we had an existing moratorium on enforcement of these exterior ice chests. That expires today. We have rolled this into the new gas station with the liquor sales. We will have that coming back to you within ninety days. We think July is likely it'll go through, planning commission in June, July back to council, and we were asking for a ninety-day extension on the enforcement of these so that we can bring you a comprehensive package for gas stations with regard to exterior convenience items, with regards to accessibility, and with regards to sales of alcohol.
All right. Councilman Banks?
Are you recommending totally eliminating the ice chest from the exterior, or will there be like a closet if the building is that number of square feet? It could be on the side or on the back of the building?
The way we've designed it is that it's a little bit of a bargain. If you're going to have alcohol sales, you have to eliminate the exterior chest. Now, some gas stations may choose not to sell alcohol, so we have a provision that exterior ice chests can remain if they meet the following standards, and there'll be a list. And primarily, it's about accessibility. They have to not impede the accessible pathway to the main entrance. The chests themselves have to be accessible. If you think of a person in a wheelchair trying to access these ice chests, it's almost impossible. I've been in myself where I've had to almost climb inside to grab late at night. They're at the bottom of the chest, and so we just want to make sure that if they're going to continue to sell them on the exterior, that they have to meet accessibility requirements, and that's part of the amendments that we'll be bringing forth to you. And we have a comprehensive working with the codes department, inventory of existing compliance and non-compliance compared from three years ago. We have more gas stations now that are in compliance than are not, but in the occasion they can meet these new standards, they will be able to continue to have ice chests on the exterior. Our goal is to try to eliminate all these outside sales. The other thing we found, just real quickly, and we'll go more depth in a couple months, is that we now only have two gas stations that have auto repair out of twenty-nine. And there was a provision for outdoor sales of windshield wipers and fluids and all that when most of them did repair. And since they've gone to the C-store model, there's really no need to have these outdoor sales. So we're trying to find a balance.
No, thank you, and I appreciate it. I mean, personally, I don't care for it on the front of the building, but I don't mind it on the side or the back. I can speak for myself, going into a gas station a few weeks ago, trying, inside, trying to get ice coming out, and I was just totally wet. And it's like, wait a minute, if this was on the outside, I could have just opened up the trunk, thrown it in there, and, you know, they didn't have a bag. There's no grocery carts to take it from the inside to outside, so I just wanted to bring that forward. I had a very difficult time, and I said, never again. I will go somewhere where it's outside.
Okay. Council, any other questions?
I move that we extend the moratorium on the outdoor ice chests and outdoor storage or any kind of outdoor display until ninety days out until July twenty-ninth.
Support?
It has been moved by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to extend the moratorium for outdoor ice chests, outdoor storage, or any display of any kind, as extended ninety days until July twenty-ninth, 2023. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Also, since you normally leave after all your items, congratulations on a new grandchild.
Yeah. Congratulations.
It's, the miracle of life is never ceases to amaze me, but knowing that we have a legacy, continuing the family name is always wonderful. So thank you for recognizing us, and Logan Patrick Crowde is doing well.
All right.
Now we know how to get you to smile.
All right. Next, we have, we moved the item under council, and this is the naming of the front walking loop, and I'll turn this over to Councilman Cruz.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. We, in our most recent legislative committee meeting, had a proposal come to us to discuss naming rights. Right now, what is before us is the naming rights for the front walking loop in front of City Hall, and name it in honor of former Councilwoman Barbara Tally. And after our discussions, we decided that we wanted to recommend for approval this evening that we move forward with that proposal. Now, we did a whole lot of soul-searching, if you will, when it came to this. As everybody pretty much knows in Southfield, that we did move forward with the naming of City Hall after one of our former mayors and city council member, Mr. Ficassi. And now, this proposal has come before us, and as we were discussing it, the idea about this creating a slippery slope for the city that, meaning that there may possibly be many number of people that feel they should have some type of designation here in the city in terms of naming maybe a park, a street, whatever the case may be. And so we wanted to kind of get a handle on that, and so we've been researching some different types of options from other cities and municipalities, and they vary a lot. Some have said not to name anything after anybody, at least until they're already deceased or passed away. We've had some that have an application process where you can be nominated or apply, that you could have, you know, some type of designation somewhere within the city and otherwise. I mean, there's just a number of different things that go into this, and so we decided that still at the meeting, that we make this proposal, that we move forward with the naming of the oval loop for Barbara Tally, being the first African-American to serve on this city council, which is very historic in and of itself, and that we put a moratorium on naming anything else at this point until we have had enough time to do more research and come back with a recommendation that this is how we will do it moving forward. And so that's what we will do. I think this is something that we can probably come to terms with in a couple months, you know, in the legislative committee. And so, again, as president of the committee, I'm here to recommend we had a unanimous decision to move forward and asking the council to support our recommendation, and we move forward with it, you know, as soon as possible.
And I just also want to point out that in the write-up, it does say that there was a verbal request, but the city has since received a very detailed and thorough written request from the MLK Task Force with their request, that there are reasonings and validation for their request. Mr. Mayor?
I'm a little confused about this. The discussion that I was in was not the walking path, but the driveway and the loop in front, because that connects to the peace poles, which were Barbara Tally's initiative that council, then-council president Cruz, may become a reality. It wasn't the, I mean, there are two things going on out there. There's the walking oval, and then there's the driveway with the circle in front of this building. So that's the way I understood it, so I just saw the way this was written, and that's not my understanding. But Councilman Brightwell is also on the committee, so.
Councilman Brightwell?
Yeah, I saw this, and I think there was a miscommunication. I spoke to Mr. Zorn with respect to getting this corrected, with respect to making sure the drive, with the circular drive in front of City Hall, that was the intent. I'm not sure where we got where it was designated to the lawn circle, but the intent of the committee, which I'm on, the mayor and a couple people from MLK, that it would be the circle drive that circles in front of the peace pole, and the intent would be for that to be named the Barbara Tally Way, so.
And if I could just add, we were talking about putting a street sign up that said Barbara Tally Way, like any other corner street sign.
And I think some of the confusion came in because we didn't have anything in writing, which is why I made that request. And just, you know, when there's verbal requests and everyone's playing telephone, I think it gets a little tricky. So we will make sure that that is corrected in future minutes, that it's not the walking loop, but it's the driveway and circular drive in front of City Hall that we're discussing.
Yep. And you're right, Mr. Mayor, that's exactly what we said, so, you know, I just want
you know, I just want to make sure, if I didn't make it clear, that was our purpose, and that's what we'd like to see done.
All right. Are there any, any other questions from council? Councilwoman Hoag?
I'm glad to hear that we're going to put a moratorium on this. I, I would have liked for it to have been done when we named this place after Mr. Frikasi, so that we can have something in place. Certainly, we need to move on that policy, that guideline before another request is presented to us, so.
Absolutely. Any other, Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. And I would just like to reiterate that if an agenda item is not complete, and if we don't have the supporting documentation, there are other meetings. There's a meeting next week, there's a meeting the following week, and we can get the correct, accurate information. I just do not think that something should be placed on the agenda that is not complete, and definitely not a verbal request.
Counsel, any other questions or comments?
You want a motion, yes, sir?
If you want to make one.
Okay. I move that we proceed with the special tribute to honor Barbara Tally, in the name of the street in front of City Hall, ending at the peace walk, at the peace poles, the Barbara Tally Way.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to name the front driveway and loop in recognition and in honor of former Councilwoman Barbara Tally, Barbara Tally Way. Yes, Mr. Fraser?
Yeah, I'd like to say this comment, and it is, excuse me, Councilwoman Banks made a salient point, and that is that there's not documentation, and I was given the understanding that it was either a casual conversation, or a telephone call, or something. I think we need something in writing to show why we made this decision, rather than just a...
Yes. So, over the weekend, after this item was added, we did ask for a written request. Over the weekend, it was...
Yeah, there's, I, I think something as important as this, even though we're going to put a moratorium on it, that there should be documentation. You can't win a Nobel Peace Prize, you can't win an Oscar, you can't win any kind of a major award without some documentation of why they're given the award.
Correct.
And right now, it's just a telephone call from one person to another. At least, that's what I was given to understand.
I don't know if you had a chance, on Sunday, Councilwoman Brightwell sent a three-page letter from the MLK Task Force with their request and reasoning of why this was requested.
Say that again, please.
On Sunday morning, Councilwoman Brightwell forwarded a request from the MLK Task Force to all the council members with, it was a three-page letter from the Task Force explaining the request and why they feel Barbara Tally is a worthy recipient. And that will be added in as part of our reasoning to the record.
Okay.
I'll make sure that our clerk has it.
Okay.
Mr. President, does that mean that we have to go back and do Mr. Frikasi as well as a rash out, because we didn't do one for him?
No. I don't...
Wait. We, we had, we had discussion at the council meeting. I mean, the council as a whole, council as a whole discussed the situation with reference to...
This is, this was almost a one-off.
So, I think, I, I think it's a little bit different, and, and it has nothing to do with, you know, the individual that we're trying to honor this evening. It's just the way it was presented. With reference to this campus, all of council had their input. If you remember, it started out with maybe just outside the doors, and then from the doors, it went a little bit further, and then, you know, it was a building. But everyone participated in the conversation.
Yeah.
Where in this situation, all of council did not have that opportunity. And the original communication that was submitted with the packet, there was no supporting material. So, if you read your material on Friday, or even Saturday, you wouldn't have known that a document was submitted Sunday morning. Document Sunday morning should have been given to administration prior to. I think that's all we're saying.
Okay.
I, I wasn't trying to be petty by any means. I was just, just saying, we just, we want to be consistent moving forward.
Which is why we're going to put a moratorium.
And that's why we do the moratorium. Yep.
So, we currently have, we currently have a, a motion on the floor, a motion by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Taylor, to name the front driveway and loop in front of City Hall in recognition and in honor of former Councilwoman Barbara Tally, Barbara Tally Way. Any further discussion?
Question for clarification for the clerk?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure, are we planning to do, is it council intended to do a moratorium separately?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you want to make a motion on the moratorium?
Oh, yes. Mr. President, I'd like to move that we pass a moratorium on naming rights here in the city until further notice.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilwoman, Councilman Cruz, sorry, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve a moratorium on naming rights within the city until further notice. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If I can, just for an administrative, one item of clarification. It befundled me to no end to see what was written on this agenda. How did, can I, can somebody just tell me how that happened? Because the intent of what should have been on the agenda was what happened tonight. I don't know how, how this, how this, how this confusion with respect to the lawn, I don't know how that happened.
Well, that's, it happened because everything was done verbally, and that's why we were trying to get written requests put in place. When this item was added to the agenda late on Friday, I was told that it was, it had to be done this week, I guess, in order to give the planning.
Sure. Okay.
The, the committee, the Barbara Tally Committee, time and, and to get the sign made, to get everything done. So, that's why I put out that request, to get something in writing, to make sure that it's not just a verbal request, that it's something that's in writing, so we don't run into these issues again, whether it's a verbal request, a phone call to somebody for naming, or so we don't have incorrect titles in our packets.
Okay.
We got it corrected. That's the most important thing.
Yeah, yeah, no problem. I was just trying to nip something in the bud on a going-forward basis. I'm good.
We got it.
Okay, thank you. And now, we'll get to the rest of the council portion. We'll start with Councilwoman Hoag.
Thank you. Just a couple of things. I had the pleasure and honor to attend services at New Hope Missionary Baptist Church here in Southfield, to the installation services for Dr., Pastor Aaron Chapman. I attended the evening service and was able to see some of our residents that come and spend time with us here, Mrs. Joanne Wright and Mrs. Dorothy Rowe. I want to thank the congregation for their invite. And I'd like to give special thanks to the DPW Department, who's been doing a great job with the tree limbs and chip, chipping services and all of that. I've been seeing some great progress in our area, so just want to give that department additional kudos. Thank you. There's more to come, because people are still chopping away the dead trees themselves, especially in my neighborhood. So, it's going to be a while before I think we can completely say that we're done. But I would ask that residents just kind of, I'm also noticing that they're brushing them out into the streets, and so, just to be careful with that, and be mindful that it's, it's a lot of work for a lot of people that has to get that done. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Brightwell?
I don't have anything tonight, but I do want to, this is a, a little interest, the Art Commission, and I want to thank the Art Commission for decorating our, our lobby on a, on a routine and regular basis. And I know we have a, an exhibit coming up soon with respect to Asian art. And I'm, ever since I was on the Veterans Commission, and we have some veteran things in the lobby that, that are there, and I appreciate the fact that they, they've been there, they'll stay there because of, of the, we have one item that came from the Iraq War. It was a war zone. But I'm definitely appreciative of the Art Commission, and I'm looking forward to the new exhibit. It, it adds some beauty to, to, to the, to this, to this building. And I, and I won't go into the history of, why I really appreciate it, but I thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yes, I only have one thing. I'd just like to remind everyone that May is Teen Mental Health Month, and that there will be an event being held over at the field zone. I think it's next week. I, I'm not sure of the date right now, but it is on our website. So, just talk to our teens on the 7th, I'm sorry, thank you, on May 7th. So, talk with your teens, if you have teens. If not, maybe you can befriend someone and allow them to talk to you and listen, because one of the biggest things that was explained to me when we were talking with the teens, we were doing a special project, the teens said that no one hears them. They, they feel like they're not being heard. So, maybe we could just take a little bit more time to listen to our teens and hear what they have to say. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Cruz?
Mr. President, I have no comments this evening.
All right. Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you. I have a few. The Southfield Parks and Recreation Department will be offering a tennis free-for-all clinic on Saturday, May 6th, from 10:00 to 11:30 a.m. at the Beechwood Parks Tennis Courts. The free 90-minute beginner class will take place at Beechwood's, because the tennis courts here are under renovation, and this is a free program. Also, the Southfield Public Library is sponsoring an art contest to select a new design for their Southfield Public Library cards in recognition of their 20th anniversary of their current building. Hard to believe it's 20 years. So, if you know of anyone, participants are encouraged to showcase their best festive design and highlight what they enjoy most about the Southfield Public Library and its services. And then, the last item, counsel, the public health emergency and national state of emergency for COVID-19 has stated that it's over. I think it's time now for us to revisit whether we need to bring the employees all back to work. I spoke to Mr. Zorn about it this afternoon, and told him I was going to be bringing it to the council. And I don't know what your feeling is, but I think it's time that everyone report back to their offices. So, I don't know if we need a motion, or, is, if I make a motion, is that appropriate, or, at this time?
You could make a motion. I think it would be easier to give a directive rather than a motion. I think a motion kind of makes things very limited, but it's the, I'll, I'll leave that up to my colleagues. I'd like to hear from, from Mr. Zorn.
We actually don't have that many people still working remotely. We do in both our HR and our accounting group, and occasionally in other departments. As it, it's been explained to me, in today's workforce, it's, you know, things have changed. If people have functions that can be done from a remote location, employers are supporting that. And in particular, our accounting group has, has job assignments that they can do remotely. You know, some employers are requiring that people are in their office three, three days a week, four days a week. The administration's happy to carry out whatever the directive of city council is. For, from my position, when the COVID first started, we were asking the directors to work with their staff and develop a work plan on working remotely. And in certain cases, functions have been able to be performed, but the vast majority of people are at work daily. And, but, you know, if, if council wants that, you know, no one working remotely, we'll make that happen.
Well, I guess I'll try it, then.
My, my question is, are you, are you looking at five days a week, or are you looking at, you know, some type of hybrid, three days in the office, two days, are you allowing one day at home?
I, I think that employees need to come back to work. I personally think it's healthy. We are a municipality, or not General Motors, in fact, even General Motors, they're bringing their employees back. You know, the auto companies are bringing them back. I think we can leave it up to the city administrator if there is a certain case where maybe for whatever reason, someone may have to work at home. But I think it's just time for the health, safety, and welfare of our employees and the residents of the city, that people come back to work. So, but again, that's my feeling.
Yes, Councilwoman Hoag.
So, for me, in my workplace, we were remote, working remotely 100%, and we stayed that way. I think, for me, if the particular positions do not have their interface with the citizens, I wouldn't be opposed to those positions continuing to work remotely. Like, for instance, you have a lot of people that do project management or IT, and they just don't interface with the, the, the public. We found in our business that there's a lot of advantages to keeping folks to work remotely. Obviously, if work isn't getting done, then you have to do something. But if it works, especially in, in times now where you don't necessarily have the salaries that you want to give folks, this becomes part of the benefit package to work remotely. It really does. People look at that. I mean, I'd have to be honest, if I was told I got to come back in the office, I might leave my job at about this time, to be honest. So, I think we need to be very careful before we do that. I wouldn't want us to make a rushed decision right now. Let's, let's put it out there. Let's, I would rather let the administration talk about it, see the feelings, because, again, I know for me, if I already told my boss, if you call me back in, I'm out of here. Because there's too many people in my industry that were working remotely, and it hasn't, it hasn't stopped. So, I, I, I don't want us to make a rushed decision without getting some feedback from the administration, especially on those jobs that don't interface with the public.
So, with that being said, is it possible, Mr. Zorn, for you to come back next week with how many employees are not, would, would be eligible to work from home, meaning they're not, it's not like a public works job where they're driving a chipper truck, or they're not in the, they're not customer-facing, and they have the ability to work from home?
The, the maximum number of employees who have remote access, I believe, is rated around 120 employees. In our IT group, there were people working one day a week, and I just, just a week ago, Monday, Renee Hannah Hoss and I had this conversation, working one day a week from home. I'm told that when people are interviewing, in particular, they're now asking, what's your, what's, what's your policy on this? And there are certain functions that lend themselves to doing this, and there are others that can't. I mean...
Right. And I'm not necessarily looking at who has remote access, because...
I can give you a snapshot of who, who has in the last week.
But I, I'm looking, I guess I'm looking for who, who has, who could potentially work from home because they don't, as Councilwoman Hoag said, they don't face citizens. You know, they're strictly in a back office somewhere, working on a computer or something like that. But I think that would help guide the decision.
It's all... It's also certain days, you know, I'll tell you. If Lee Schultz at one day says she's going to spend the whole day doing plan review, she could do that at her dining room table. We're moving everything to electronic submittal. If my plan reviewer is saying, "Hey, all I'm doing today is reviewing plans," that can be done right there at their table. And I'm just telling you, this is what my employees and managers and directors are telling me.
Councilwoman Banks?
Well, and then we have some departments where on some days, there's absolutely no one in the department, and they may not interface with the public, but they interface with each other. And, I mean, I'll just use IT because that was, you know, mentioned earlier. You can't have the whole IT department out because if there's a problem, someone has to be there. So there should always be someone available in every single department. It should never be a department has no one there in case someone within the organization needs to talk to someone.
I don't believe that to be the case with IT.
No, no, I was just using that as an example. No, IT, in fact, I didn't even know that they worked from home. IT is always available. But I'm just saying there are some departments, and I'm not going to name the departments.
If you spend time with Renee Hannah-Hos, he gets notices any time there's something suspicious. You know, he'll get it right to his phone.
Correct. No, I was not referring to IT.
And I agree. I think, you know, I know that where I work, we only, we're only required to be in the office generally one day a week, unless we need to be. But you always have to have at least one person in the office as well. Councilman Brightwell?
I think there's another angle to this. There's an efficiency and a productivity angle to this. And in some kind of way, I know we have to measure that individual that's off-campus and base versus the individual that's on-campus 24/7 or whatever the routines are. How efficient are they? Is there a plus or minus in the efficiency? That's a decision point. The other point being is level of employees. And it's a documented fact that team building is done by being around the team. And there's a culture building. There's ability to build a culture if people are in that team. So there's different angles to it, but the big thing of it is productivity. I mean, are people actually being productive? Are we losing any productivity? I know with technology, you can be in Timbuktu and sell a project here in Southfield. But I'm not sure where we are. Are we just, I would rely on Mr. Zorn, the city administrator, to give me some type of guidance with respect to productivity, the team-building aspect. And I would, and do we want to deal with level of employees? That we bring on a new person, and they never, you know, they never shows up here in the building, maybe once a week. They never really get into the culture of the city of Southfield or the government of Southfield. They never get into the team building. And so it's a multi, it's more than just having a butt in a seat. It has to be some other parameters there that are beneficial to, you know, the residents of Southfield. How productive are they in presenting or performing their mission of their department?
Okay. Councilwoman Taylor?
Yeah, I just wanted to add or say that for me, for me, I think we need to say that we're kind of like a service industry. We have to say that from 8 to 5, there is an expectation that someone is going to be here. How that department manages that, we would like to hear from you, Fred. But for us as a council, a resident say, "I want to go to the water department." They want to be able to say, if the hours on our website says that the water department is 8 to 5, they should be able to come in and talk to somebody whom, you know, I'm not saying that it has to be the same person. That could be a hybrid type of attendance. But the expectation from the residents and from us on council is that that service needs to be provided at the hours that we say they're going to be there. We can't, they can't answer that from home because we're coming into the office to see a person. So I think the coverage needs to be there. And that's just my opinion. I think that the coverage needs to be there. We're saying that this is a governmental facility. We're saying that we provide services between Monday through Friday, 8 to 5. That needs to be provided.
I think we're all saying the same thing, but we just need the more information of, for example, if we're going to say that, let's say, one day a week, someone can work from home, that can't be every single person in the water department, in your example. There has to be somebody there who could answer the phone or could speak to somebody when they walk in. But I think we need some additional information to figure out.
And I don't believe that's happening, so.
No, I'm going with the example.
I don't want the public to think that is in fact happening.
Right. So for example, for example, in the clerk's office, that's a difficult job to do from home when you're, you know, getting people to, you know, when you're coming in, asking for birth certificates or different requests to hand them back to people. The treasurer's office, who's accepting, you know, payments over the counter, that's more difficult to figure out, can some of those employees work from home? But when you have IT, accounting, you know, some of the Parks and Rec area planning who don't necessarily, well, planning does see people. But you have some of the people who are not necessarily always customer-facing. Like you said, you know, engineering, if one day it's just plan review, that can be done at home. Then that can be done at home. But I think if we had a better idea of which of those departments have a function of customer-facing versus non-customer-facing would help us in continue this discussion and figure out how we want to go about it. Does that, does that make sense?
I'm fine with that as long as we do it within the next few weeks because I'd like to come up with a decision one way or another. Thank you.
Okay. Was there anything else? Councilwoman Banks?
No, thank you.
Councilman Frazier?
Yes. For me, as a council, we hired the city administrator to run the city as efficiently and as well as it could be run. To take that out of our city administrator's hands by telling him what we expect him to do, I think reduces his effectiveness because he has a team. Now, the problem that I have is, it would be a real easy answer if he ran the whole city, if everybody reported to him. We've got people that report to us, and we have people that report to the city administrator. And I don't know, the people that report to us, do they ever call us and say, "I want to work from home today"? As, when I was council president, no one ever called me and said, "I want to work from home today" or not. So I think, to me, the satisfactory answer would be to let the city administrator deal with his team to make it work as best as he could. The frustrating thing for me is something a little bit different. When I call the main line, the main number, and I get, and I don't get anyone, that's frustrating to me, as I would imagine it would be for a lot of the citizens that call in. They don't know who they want to talk to for sure, but it comes, spell the last name. Spell, you know, or press 2 for each department, you know. So I think that needs to be fixed so that people that really don't come here all the time, but just once in a while may want to talk about the water bill or something, can get somebody to answer the phone when they call in. That's my point on this discussion that was going on.
Thank you. Do you have anything else to add for this evening?
The other thing is, and I brought it up last week, is I am concerned about the number of gun incidents that are going on around the country. If you listen to the news like I do, we've had more mass shootings this year than we've had days in a year. And there were two yesterday. And it seems like it's just getting out of, it's been way out of hand. Our state legislature is trying to do something with red flag laws and making sure that people get a license and the whole thing for their guns. And I don't really care if anybody has a gun. I think we have a problem with people knowing how to settle a difference by talking to each other. And somehow or another, we've got to get back to that. And that's one of the things that concerns me. The other thing I brought up earlier tonight, and that was teaching our children that they need to take care of the earth. We screwed it up. But they start, they need to take care of the earth. And with Beechwood Park, I think there are opportunities to have classes to give young kids the kind of training or classes on what makes the world a better place rather than let it keep going in the same direction it is. And I certainly hope that it gets included in the park plan so that our kids have an opportunity to make the world a better place. That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Just piggybacking off of that, on Friday, the mayor and Councilman Brightwell and I took our umbrellas outside and went to the Arbor Day Tree Planting in front of City Hall. I think the rain made it a little bit easier for those in forestry and Parks and Rec to dig the holes for the trees. But we definitely, they planted two new trees in front of City Hall. I'm sure if you drive by, you can tell which ones they are. It was also mentioned, this month is also National Nurses Month. So if you see a nurse, know a nurse, thank them because they definitely deserve it. Also, next, this coming Saturday from 12 to 2 in front, over here at the Civic Center Park, is going to be a sports day. It was originally scheduled for this past Saturday, but they got rained out. So this coming Saturday, in addition to the tennis free-for-all that was mentioned, there will also be a free sports day from 12 to 2 at Civic Center Park. Also, I don't remember if anyone mentioned the Bike Night this Wednesday. This Wednesday from 5 to 7 in front of City Hall is Bike Night. They will have bike companies checking bikes. So please, if you can ride your bikes, at least try to ride your bikes to City Hall, and they will check them out. If not, you can drive them here and ride them home. And also, Corwell Health is partnering with Parks and Rec to give out 400 bike helmets while supplies last. So you'll be, you know, properly fitted and given a bike helmet. There'll also be some additional activities around bikes. So again, that's this Wednesday from 5 to 7 right here in front of City Hall. With that, I will turn it over to the mayor.
Good evening once again. This is Asian Pacific American Month. And as Councilman Brightwell alluded to, we have a new display in the lobby. It's Asian art, local artists. And this will be on display for the next three months as we change the art display. When I say "we," it's really not me. It's the Art Commission. It's changed every three months quarterly. So you are all invited this Friday to the artist reception will be held in the lobby from 6 to 8 p.m. Meet the artists, look at their art, hear about their art, and there'll be light refreshments. And then speaking of the Art Commission and the Friends of Southfield Public Arts, you will be getting an invitation. I hope you'll support this event. We're having the grand opening of the Brooks Barn on 12 Mile Road. It's got a certificate of occupancy, finally. And so there'll be a presentation on the history of the barn and its reconstruction, its restoration, as well as a recap of the projects of the Friends. This will be held on May 19, 20, and 21. As you recall, they're limited capacity by our council action. It's capped at 49 people can be at the barn at once. So again, I hope that you'll support this. The funds, it's $100 per person. The funds will all go to the Nine Mile Carter Placemaking Project that we're currently working on with the planning department. We will have the, sort of the touch base meeting for various entities that have been working on Juneteenth. We'll have another Juneteenth celebration. That'll be a week long in June, starting on June 14. And we're having the coordination meeting to do the schedule at 3 o'clock this Thursday in the council study room. I know that the historical society, the AKAs, Parks and Rec, the library, and the accelerator all have things that they're contributing to that week. So you'll be hearing more about that. The schedule will be announced. Along with Councilwoman Hoag, I did attend the New Hope Missionary Baptist installation of the new pastor. It was quite a joyous Sunday at that church. And again, many of our residents attend there. And then finally, and I'm going to ask the council president to perhaps expand on this, but this is the first meeting in May. And per the Southfield City Charter, we have the budget. We're expecting that you will get a hard, a full copy. Tonight, I'm giving you the overview that's been prepared by city administrator Zorn, us and Michael's, our budget director, and myself. I've reviewed the budget. And of course, you'll have your opportunities to weigh in on it before it's adopted in June. What we're hoping to have happen is that you'll get the hard copy of the full budget by Friday so that you're able to look through it. As you know, there are a number of dates scheduled for budget review, and I'm going to leave that to council president, Milo Baum. But you take one of these and pass it. This is the high overview of the 2324 municipal budget. And that's all I have tonight, Councilman, Council President.
Thank you. So as the mayor mentioned, we are now receiving the recommended budget for the next fiscal year. We do hope that, as, again, as it was mentioned, that the council will have the full printed packet by Friday. And I am currently working in, I'm in discussions with Mr. Zorn and Mr. Michael about the easiest and most efficient way to go through the budget sessions as a, as in council. So we do have four meetings scheduled for budget hearings. I don't believe we'll need all of them, but more details will be forthcoming once we know the full budget and a proposed timeline of going through those different city departments. I also, I forgot to mention that our city clerk, Bettis, was with us at the tree plant- I also, I forgot to mention that our city clerk, Bettis, was with us at the tree planting as well, so, with her umbrella. So, thank you. And with that, with our umbrellas, city administration?
I have no items for action this evening. Thank you.
City attorney?
I have nothing further really to add, except I guess I should celebrate that I've been with the city for 20 years.
Congratulations.
As of last week.
Thank you. City clerk?
Just wondering, do we usually do a receiving file for the budget? Nope? Okay, I have nothing. Thank you.
You don't, no, it's more just it has to be handed to us. You don't do a receiving file?
No, this is, you're going to, you're going, the council will vote on the budget in June, so this is, by charter, I have to pass this out tonight.
Do you want to make it official that we received it?
That's...
Okay, I will entertain the motion.
It's at council's discretion generally if it's in the charter that you have to receive it, then you want a record that you did.
Mr. President?
All right.
Just a thought.
There's certainly no harm in receiving and placing a file.
So moved.
Agreed.
Support.
All right, hold on, my pen broke. All right. It has been moved by Councilwoman Taylor, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to receive and file the recommended draft budget for the 2324 fiscal year, given to us by the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you for the indulgence.
Anything else?
No.
All right, we have city treasurer, planner, assessor, engineer, nothing to schedule. Anything else to come before the council? This meeting is adjourned.